The mayor is delayed on the highway, so we'll give him a few minutes to get here. So to everyone here, do you want to proceed or do you want to just hold briefly?
These five more minutes, why don't we just hold?
Okay, we'll hold for five and then resume. Okay, stand by everybody. Okay, welcome, everybody. It is Thursday, May fourth at four oh five P M. We're calling the meeting to order. The Committee of the Hall regarding the budget. Let's move straight to the adoption of the agenda. Anybody have any comments?
I think the comment, will you comment on the close?
Right. You wanted? Sure. With regard to close, my understanding is that there is nothing currently enclosed. However, as we proceed through the budget, if something comes up that is more appropriate enclosed, I think that it would be appropriate to refer to that. So I think the close is actually just a placeholder. So we're actually not expecting to to go there, but we certainly will inform everyone as we proceed. So with that, I move adoption of the agenda.
Okay, so if we do go into first, then I hope someone's got the community chart at hand and can find the appropriate pause. Right. Because I don't think we have the, not knowing what we're doing, we don't have the closes there, but they're quick to find. So I'm sure we could, we can find, we can do that.
So from my perspective, are, I understand we're not getting the labor model enclosed. Is that right?
Yeah, that was a question. Let's discuss it when we get there. Okay, we can do it in the open.
Yep, we're gonna do it in the open.
Yeah.
Okay, so enclosed, we're not doing that. So my perspective would be that if we have nothing for close, that we just strike closed off the agenda right now. I mean, is there any reason?
Something come up that?
We all thinks appropriate for close.
Okay.
Be it a personal issue or something else.
Okay, but there's nothing else on the table for closed other than what might come up.
Correct.
Okay, so shall we adopt the agenda as it is then? Evan, do you want to second that?
I will second that, yeah.
Very good, all in favor? Right, yes. Agenda approved. And public participation? What we got?
Two people up there. Do you want to give Ken another three minutes or do you want to do public participation? First of all, we should find if anyone wants to speak.
Yeah.
And they prefer to.
Okay.
Karen, is there something you want to do in public participation?
Anyone in the gallery wish to speak? It's a public participation.
Okay. All right, so Carl's joined us.
Okay.
Evening, Mr. Burke.
All right. Doesn't look like we have any public participation. Shall we just recess briefly to allow Ken to join us or?
You want to start?
If we might as well move on, right, begin?
Sure.
Okay. So number four, no review or approval of minutes. We'll move on from that. There comes Ken, so we'll move right to reports and to five A. Five A one. Good, over to you, Ron and Phil.
Let me start.
You've got the packet.
I'll start.
So we'll move air over to Ken. Can I jump over in your absence? We're at A one.
Very much. Okay. No, because no audience participation. We have motion to adopt the agenda. We've done that all done.
Yeah, we're at five A one.
We're just about to start the report.
Okay, we'll move over to staff and Mr. Miller and Joe.
Yeah, I'd like to introduce. How do you do? I'd like to introduce the process of review and a budget. I don't know who's new to a budget process or how much there's people on board or what it takes to review a budget. Over the last few months, you have drafted and updated the budget. Over the last few weeks, we're at a point where this almost died last. Budget is a fluid document, though. It's, we prepare draft, we make changes, we make discussions, and we get requests for public input. And now we're basically, today we're at version two, going over some of the changes based on some discussions we've had at last council meeting, that finance committee meeting, which is new stuff that we get from. I'm giving idea how a budget works. Or in power to review a budget. I've probably done a thousand of these. I can't say I've done one this small or this simple, but it's, they're all the same. It's, you've got to think in terms, what makes this budget so relatively uncomplicated? It's the infrastructure here that makes it work. It's not like a normal business where you work about revenue, production, costs, those sort of things, marketing. This is, you're a lot of revenue, you're a few sources of revenue, but the only concern about is property tax utility bills and user fees. So how do you want to look at this budget and how we look at it is, twenty twenty two, Village prepared its five-year plan. That five-year plan includes twenty twenty three to twenty twenty six. Am I not good? Now it's twenty seven.
So last year was to come.
Twenty-two to twenty-six. Twenty twenty-three is in the budget. So they've already drafted that budget. We then take that budget, it's part of a five-year plan, it's filed with the ministry. We say, what's changed? So first of all, what's changed? What do you anticipate to change? We look at the actual for twenty twenty three compared to the slightly different twenty twenty two and compared to the budget for twenty twenty three. So we're looking at those three things and saying, what's changed? But we need some of the community and then we, if you didn't get any feedback, even the last two hours, we'll check again in a minute. But how you want to look at it is, what has changed? What's changed in the budgeting process? This is in the community where it's affecting changes. Calo projects for twenty twenty three, we know, we know they're already finalized, we're not expecting surprises. There's nothing new that's going to happen that we don't know today. Twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-seven, the capital expenditures, you can talk about it, it was only in the next six months. So that'll be a next budget. So.
Yeah, yeah, that's good. Do you want to say something?
I have some questions.
Now, so you did miss it, but just in the chair, we can, no, we didn't have any public participation, Ken.
We've got public participation on the next item six. Do we want to wait?
Well, we might as well just go back and, we had none, we had none to open. And can I just ask, as a point of information, do we have a recorder? Oh, that's you, Marina? Okay, very good. And what?
Sorry. Was Miller was walking us through this, so we're on item number five. We'll wait till item number six to do public questions. You've already passed that. Also, and I think out of respect for our staff, I will let them continue.
Well, let's ask Mr. Miller if he'd be okay with a brief interruption, just to allow.
Sorry, you're gonna go through the chair on that?
Just assume that was through the chair.
I'm gonna say no, because I have no problem with public, but why don't explain what the process is first? And then you can open up the questions, what do you like? But I want to sort of let everyone know how the budgeting process works, the type of questions you ask or can ask. At least asking you want, except for the regulation or people's actual salaries that will be reported in the SOF report, but it's not something for today. So we're talking about the budgets, I went through what it includes. In twenty twenty-two, the twenty twenty-three budget was prepared, it was approved by council. There's so, but every year you update it. You can actually update a budget totally after you've done a bunch. Right? Our goal was to get this budget filed, like it for the twenty fourteen.
Fifteenth. Well, it's, yeah, deadline now.
Fourteen fifteen. And there's no reason we can't do that. We don't want to spend too much time on capital projects because I understand you're going through a grant committee and infrastructure committee, which is the perfect way to do it. Also, both in the state capital projects. Carl Buier is on the line today, seeing if we have general questions. But remember, we know what's happening with the twenty twenty-three. We're into it five months. We only have six months to go. We know what money we've got, we know grants we've got. We know some things might hurdle. But the whole point is, we want to present the budget. Joe is going to give a very good overview of the budget. And I think at the end of each fund, we'll ask for questions rather than wait until the very end. The very end, I will then come back on and say, let's debate property tax increases. Okay, and there's nothing is installed. These are our recommendations. And that's why we're here today is to say, what do you think the community can handle? What do you think we've got in plants? Loans, sale of lands, all sorts of things. So we're very flexible. So we'll talk, and then you can talk. We've recommended a certain amount of property tax increases. Last year, they recommended a certain amount of property tax increases. Give some framework, the increase in property taxes last year was six point five percent. Just to give you some perspective of where we're going today. I think everybody knows what's going on in the lower mainland.
Yes.
We're not asking for anything that hasn't already been asked for. But we're not the lowest bidder. Okay, like, we're not gonna pull punches, we'll give you all the information. Okay, so with that, I'm gonna ask Joe to go through the budgets. He's gonna start with an overall summary and then go into each different fund. This process is the same process adopted by all municipalities. It's not a long process. It can be as long as you want, but most of them, it's a few days. Or to get it done, not to debate the budget. The debate, the budget is a couple hours. And we're not, we don't need to be here for, for till midnight. Right? We're not talking about commercial use, resident, industrial use. We don't have those complications. We have a simple infrastructure and a very simple office. So we can make it as complicated as you want.
Okay. Joe, do you mind if we, I'll chain one question from the gallery, just in case the rail wants to?
That's why I'm so against.
Sorry?
I have to go, I have to go to a gallery.
Yeah. All right.
Yeah.
Go ahead, if you don't mind standing at the podium.
So, okay. So my question is, do you want me to write my name? Let's make yourself stand up.
You know, just identify yourself.
So my question is.
Just identify yourself.
My name is Tamara. My name is Tamara. Today I live on the drive. I'm a twenty-three, twenty-four years plus resident. And my question is around staffing and salaries, not in particular, just as a global amount. We know through historically, this is our greatest, most significant dollar spent one item or group item expenditure from our tax dollar base. And I know that in the election, and I know Ken, previously, everybody was looking for efficiencies, economy scale, how do we, how do we combine things, how do we decrease things? I know Neville, you took a lot of heat and previous council took a lot of heat at looking at, how do we bring costs down? Please look to budget clarity and you lots of questions. I mean, it's traditional to have lots of questions, every council around budget time, around these types of issues. So my question is around staffing. And I guess it's to, you know, it's, it's to all of you for consideration. I know this is certainly top of mind for council, but also to run, to direct that council. I respectfully request that and urge that council direct Ron Miller to really push back and look at efficiencies, economies of scale, but also rather than hiring, just hiring good people because they're good people, you know, like, for instance, sometimes we need an engineer that's a structural engineer, not a chemical engineer. Just because you work in a legal office doesn't make you a lawyer, or you work in a doctor's office, doesn't make you a doctor. So we need to hire people who are, who fit the bill for the job, not have the job fit. People who may be really great, but that don't have the skill set. And my particular concern, I'll tie this back to a, to a reality that I'm looking at from the last update. I think it was last weekend that you sent this out with the whole this staffing, which was really great to see and meet all these people that we had never met before. But just at first glance, we have three people who have accounting as their role, as part of their role, and only one person identified as having a chartered professional designation in that role, and that person seems to be the most junior, the assistant person who's come in from the ministry. And we have, you know, the other qualifications, we have a municipal accounting person who, it hasn't been listed their accounting designation. And I would, I would expect, just if I'm, you know, if you're, if you're in charge of accounting, you have that designation, you have that professional qualification. And the same with Public Works, you have that structural engineering qualification that's.
I don't mean to cut you short, we're allowing two minutes. You build out the question.
My question is really to direct council or to encourage council to push back on efficiency and economies of scale as promised during the election in terms of staffing, to bring those staffing dollars down, not look at just moving them around and keeping a zero dollar increase, but to, to to bring it down as you all pledged and promised during the election campaign. So that's.
All right, thank you. And thank you for those comments. I think everyone's platform had something to do with reducing staffing and so on, but we'll pass it right over to the C E O, Mr. Miller.
Absolutely. To me, those are good questions. And I will address them. There's two, there's two things we have done. One is streamline the office and restructure the office. The competency level in the office in every regard is, I'm gonna say, is much higher than it was before. And you're talking that there's two CPAs now on staff, especially Joel, who's beside me, oversees the accounting department. Joe was a partner in a CPA firm. For him to come into this level, it's, it's not a big jump. It's not a jump at all. The accountant in there has considerable experience. She is not a CPA, and nor would we want a CPA in that accounting role. That's bookkeeping accounting. That's not a role for CPA, what we call a professional designation.
Sorry, Ron, who are you referring to specifically now?
No, the accountant is not a CPA.
Yeah, but you said she, this would be.
Accountant, do I need to use names?
Well, our municipal accountant.
Our municipal accountant.
I think you're referring to the.
Not, is not a CPA, nor would I have wanted a CPA because we'd have too many of them, the cost would be enormous. And we don't need that level, but Karen does an incredible job. She has great experience. And she took on a role where she had basically no training. New Public Works guy, Carl Buier, talking about the education and training. So the competency level, I think, has gone up a different level. We streamlined the office, we restructured the office, each personnel, the role they're taking is they are soy fishing that, is do a great job. Including the person on my left, Marina, the training that Marina's had, and please don't listen. She's taken all the courses in municipal government clerical work. I don't think we've ever had that before. Right, so what we're, is being very efficient, but you always got to keep in mind, and we certainly do, costs are important. So we have to be streamlined. Like, I was given a mandate when I started, and we've got to streamline the office and make it efficient. And I would gladly push back if I said, you need three CPAs on staff. But I think we're going in the complete right direction. And with that, I'll just give it to Joe.
Just one question, have you seen cost savings up to date, up to this date? Or do you foresee some additional cost savings as we go through? Because this has been a transitional period over the last six months with lots of departures and new people coming on board.
So I might be critical of old stuff, because everybody has a different perspective. But when you bring in people with different backgrounds, they see things differently. And I'm giving this the credit of the finance committee and other committees. The cost savings have probably been in the hundreds of thousands of dollars, not in the tens of thousands of dollars. Just the things that we see things differently.
So you might. You need to push back on that. You ran on this platform, Ken. You absolutely.
That's why I asked that.
I don't like, show us.
Tomorrow.
Because I'm happy to hear that.
Sorry, tomorrow. You had your two minutes, and it's actually more like five. So just allow the staff and council to debate this now and try to answer. Okay, so I'll ask for your respect on that front. Okay.
Unfortunately, it's not tough to show, but then Joe will get into it.
My counsel was, my comment to that was, anytime we've gone to this budget and these versions, I don't see that saving on the staffing line. I keep asking why it's not there.
No, no, you, it's not there, but you're also not looking for it. We have not gone into the detail. It's on there. And we're gonna go through that.
We'll see that today.
You will see that today.
Okay.
Because it's very clearly there.
Perfect. Okay, I haven't managed to see it. So, yeah, so hopefully we can see that today and understand that. And that's the reason I was asking for the labor model.
So then if you have the labor model, you keep asking for labor, and you'll get the labor costs. It's not just labor. And labor here, because there's, how many people? Ten people work here?
Whatever it takes to explain. So we can ask the questions as we go through. It doesn't jump out to you. The numbers don't seem to be going down. So we need, we need to understand that and understand why. And we'll get, we'll get to that in a bit. But I'm seeing.
I don't think it's a surprise. I think the mayor has brought this up a few times where these savings are.
We, I don't think we've heard any specifics.
Right, because in the finance committee, it's.
Well, I'll name it too. Ron's talked about a hundred thousand on interest. So that's a hundred thousand. The other is we were spending three to five hundred dollars a month on banking fees, which were not necessary.
We've heard of it.
Just for.
But I can't, I see no evidence of.
You've seen it, you just can't. Can we get to that? The question was, we're talking about staffing costs. The question was, the staffing costs. Random question. If we're talking about staffing costs aren't showing here, maybe the numbers are different now.
Okay, counselor. Yeah. Counselor.
We're talking about, we're talking about, talking about, and I would prefer to hear the information. And I hear the gallery of Claire, show me the money.
Counselor, you have something?
No, I, I, I had, I would like to see the evidence of that because we've heard it repeatedly in the finance committee meeting. If I can just finish here, and it, it strikes me as, as a political spin thus far. So I want to see that, I want to see the meat.
Okay, this is a budget meeting, so, of course, we don't want to go politically.
Can I do that? I have to go get ready. Can I do that? I will be listening in, is.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate.
Thanks. Uh, we'll move on.
Thank you so much. You guys are doing it.
Mr. Cherkov.
Yeah.
Save, save, save. Nobody wants an increase.
Mr. Cherkov. Here, over to you. So just a go in order of the pages that are presented in front of you. Page that is on the very front is new from what presented, finance committee and council was presented in the last version. It is similar to the next ones, which is the consolidated operating budget, which we have discussed before, but this is basically the five-year plan. And it breaks down basically on a combined level. All of our departments and our revenues, our grants, our expenditures, and what have you.
So Joe, can I ask you a question? You put this on the table when you walked in. Is this now the same thing that was on the website this afternoon, this morning, last evening, or has it changed again?
No, this, this is a new document. It hasn't been posted before.
I think I said that the first time I opened up, this is version two.
Okay, I just want to say again, I mean, to prepare intelligently for these meetings, I mean, it's a lot of documentation to go through that we should have this documentation up and, and get it to council so that we can intelligently study it and comment on it. So I'm gonna be working off the old one and trying to reference off the new one, I guess.
No, fair enough.
I'm also making it to you.
I don't have a break. No, we're gonna go through each tab and, and what have. Okay, and just to get things in order, I think Ron mentioned, Joe, you'll walk through each section.
Yeah.
And then we'll, questions, and we'll turn around the table.
Clarify, the, the additional page has two thousand twenty-three up to two thousand and twenty-seven. And that's, but, but page two is now the old page one, that's the same to me.
Yes, yes, so.
So it's just some additional information.
Correct.
Provided.
Yes.
Okay, and that you're going to go through and explain to us.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, John, over to you.
Sure. So, and the reason why we included this five-year summary here is just to give a more global perspective. Everything all at once in one page, then we can dig down into details or drill down into details as we get to each departmental budget. So as a, on a global level, so taxation, I'm looking at one point eight million for twenty twenty-three property taxes, and that currently reflects a seven percent increase. When we get to the three pages in, we'll get into the revenue department and look at the impact of property tax increases. And so, well, we can discuss a variance of, if we had lower property taxes or higher property taxes, what the effect would be on, on the budget, but this is a straight calculation based on our residents and those tax increase. Parcel taxes.
So, before we get any further, can I just maybe jump in you? Good question. So on the page you just gave us, twenty twenty-three taxation is stated as one eight four eight. If I flip the page.
One eight two nine.
It's one nine four seven. Right? One nine four seven. If I jump the two pages in, as you suggested, it's one eight oh one.
What's included in there on that piece you're referencing right now, the one eight oh one is municipal property tax, and it also includes forty-seven thousand in payments in lieu of taxes. I think it's.
The one eight, sorry, the one eight oh one gives forty-seven thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Okay. Then on the page before that, the number stated is one nine four seven. Page two.
I can check in to that for you. The bottom line number is six five three seven nine one nine, which agrees to the first page. There could be, it's just how some things are lumped together. But if you would like a detailed breakdown of why that number isn't exactly the one eight four eight, I can buy that for you.
So compared to the one that was online, we had one nine four seven. Right, one point nine five? And so that's the same. Is that right, Joe?
Yeah, so it reflects a seven percent.
Okay. So just explain to me why it says six point four there on page two? Under taxation, one point nine five, a change of one eighteen, and that is reflecting at six point four.
Oh, yeah, yeah, so six point four percent, slightly, when you average it up. So the reason why is that one point nine four seven includes the grants in lieu of forty-seven thousand.
Okay.
There's no increase in grants, and that's just money that we get from, like, B C Hydro.
Sure.
But when we get into the revenue tab, you'll see a direct correlation, like, seven percent exactly on property taxes.
Okay, and I'm trying to make sense of the, the differences than, say, as compared to the version that's on the, on the website there. It's coming on the website at six point eight five and here at six point five, right? So it's a difference of three hundred? And where would we find that?
So one thing that, when we did a review of the budget, we looked at was the, if you look at loan proceeds on that page you're referring to.
Yeah.
Last year was funded at a hundred ninety thousand dollars, it was never received.
Right.
The previous draft included an estimation that we would get another hundred ninety, if we get the hundred ninety thousand dollars or apply for funding or borrowing of a hundred ninety thousand this year. It's not gonna happen. So kick it down to the next year. But that's the reason mainly why there's a change.
Okay, so there's one ninety that we're not getting. And yet the revenue's gone up. It appears it's, oh, sorry, it's gone down. You're right. Yeah. Okay, so that's two hundred over three hundred, and the other hundred would be sitting where?
Turn it in the revenue model.
Yeah. These licenses and.
The first page is a summary.
Yeah.
And we'll get into all the specifics on each one.
Sure.
The first page is a combination consolidation, just gives you an overview of. Each page after that is the support. I will, I will say, we, we may change the budget itself, the template. A lot of the stuff we've left from last year. And there is very little flow. And we had the same question, we're trying to separate it, so we have this type of flow. But this is a, a lot of this stuff is the exact same we've had for the last five, ten years. And it's very difficult to follow.
We, we do need to go look at those numbers. Somebody's not adding up.
No, no, they all add up. We just need to get there. But all of, Joe and I spent hours going over this, making sure, where does this number come from? It's how the aggregate is always a little different. But we just need to give Joe to go through all the individual funds.
Okay.
And he'll have it.
Joe, do you want to try to, to go through and then we'll open it up for questions?
Sure.
If we go question line by line, I think we're gonna get bogged down. Would that be okay with everyone? Joe walks through, say, a page at a time? Yeah, I suggest that we keep the, the first page and the second page as kind of your global overlook, but with the questions I'm getting are more detailed by department.
Sure.
I've got tons of more detail on each.
Okay.
So I'll, I'll start.
If you'll forgive a question as we're going to, otherwise I'll forget it.
Yeah, I hope it's all. So I'm just gonna move ahead to the page on revenues. Village Blind's Day twenty twenty-three draft budget revenues.
And that would be on the paper, payment number, is that page four of the paper?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we have, you know, highlighted in yellow, the general municipal property tax increase, seven percent exactly. The infrastructure level levy has been updated to be a straight ten percent of the property tax amount, as was raised in the last finance meeting. What you show, fees and rates, everything is at a five percent increase, as was discussed in our previous council meeting. Um, what you show fees and rates, everything, um, is at a five, five percent increase as, um, was, uh, discussed in our previous council meeting. On the next page, um, we go into fees, licenses and permits.
Yeah, I could just suddenly talk a little slower. Just trying to keep up.
Oh, sure.
I'm also going back to the, the screen that I had any questions on my.
Yeah, no worries.
Okay. Right, sure.
How about, I'll, I'll ask for any questions before I flip the search.
Yeah, how's it? Yeah.
Yeah.
It works. All right.
Where, is there any questions on this first page of revenues?
So, and the notes? Okay, so we don't have notes in this one.
If there are notes on the following page. So, okay.
You, you'd mentioned that you've done a sensitivity analysis. Here we have seven percent, but I know we talked about trying to, uh, lower that. Is that somewhere in later pages?
Um, that, uh, I have, uh, a sensitivity analysis. Did I include that? That would be probably.
It's later. Fine. I just, sure is.
It is just sensitive now. I didn't tell them about.
I, I've got it in front of me. Um, I wasn't sure if I published that. That it's just, there's a whole bunch of detail here. So I wasn't sure if, um, that went out to the full thing went out to, um, posted on the website. And go through that. Uh, we have it prepared.
So Joe, do you mind just, uh, note five? I'm not finding it here. This was what you referenced earlier, forty-seven thousand.
Of payments in lieu.
Yeah, so just walk, what? The uninitiated through that one.
Uh, payments in lieu of taxes related to, uh, basically it's B C Hydro, Shaw and Tellus, um, that make an annual payment in lieu of general municipal, uh, local improvement and regional tax. District levies for their land and buildings. Um, this is, uh, been in place for a number of years. Um, it was, uh, they reference the bylaws whenever we get, um, uh, payment and, uh, advice from them. For instance, Tellus sent us a, uh, uh, recently, uh. Payman remittance saying, here's what we generated from our infrastructure as far as revenues. You're entitled one percent in accordance with this bylaw. You'll get a check for two thousand dollars. Um, the largest one comes from, uh, B C Hydro, um, and it, uh, is, 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 uh, is something that's been approved by council in, in, in the past, and we just get a check instead of levying taxes on that.
So we are, in a sense, profit sharing on some of their infrastructure.
Yeah.
So what would be an example of that? Their, their substation or what would that be?
Uh, I don't have that information right in front of me. I just know that we get some money for it.
Sounds like we need more of that.
Yeah.
Put it right in my bag.
Yeah, I do think that page you know, it's somewhere.
But did it not get printed? I apologize for that.
It's seven. Payments of taxes related to. Number five.
They just are backwards.
Okay.
Who's got a stapler? Come on, staple.
Gotcha.
All righty. Okay, so I'll move to the second page that are revenues, um, which starts with fees, licenses and permits. Uh, main change on here is that building permits we projected down to, uh, forty thousand dollars. Instead of, uh, the eighty thousand that was budgeted in twenty-two, it's more in line with the actual in twenty twenty-two and basically it allows, so we need a building inspector. We're going to start, uh, charging for building permits.
This is, uh, fees, this is page five.
Yeah, fees, licenses and permits.
Okay.
The other significant change is miscellaneous revenue that, um, as noted before, that's the payments that we're receiving from recycle B C. Are there any questions on this page in particular?
Oh, hang on a second. Now, in, in the old package, this would have been referred to as revenues. Page, page four in the old package?
Yeah.
We start the same, actually, the same change.
Um, except the building permit has changed. So that's dropped forty grand down in anticipation of a loss in permits.
Uh, yeah, we don't have a building inspector, um, and so, um, we've, uh, adjusted that to be in line with what actually happened in twenty twenty-two, um, because the twenty twenty-two. Budget, which was this was previously predicated on was kind of higher.
Right, so in twenty twenty-two, we budgeted eighty thousand incoming. We actually got forty.
Yeah.
And, uh, so we're now, but why would we even be budgeting forty? If last year we got an actual forty and we don't, I presume we, we don't have permit revenue coming in. Shouldn't it even be lower?
Great question. Um, presumably, um, we, uh, have, uh, it's funny you're saying that we potentially have somebody coming in and then we can start moving on building permits. And so it's about a half year's revenue. Uh, I don't sure if that's, uh.
Potential backlog, I would think.
Oh, yeah. I mean, there's going to be, people need permits.
Sure, they do, yeah. Um, but I mean, we're, we're missing a first quarter certainly.
Yeah.
So that number may be a bit high. Yeah, I just an observation.
Might be high. Okay, yeah.
I don't know.
We don't, there's no reason it should be high, but it could be.
Yeah.
That's part of the budgeting process. Nothing leads us to believe it's not. We are sitting on a few.
Right, so we think there's a backlog that'll then push through and make up for the first quarter or possibly the first two quarters?
Yeah, there's no.
Okay, um, just an observation on this one, you note one day, um, about the parking fines revenue. Around bylaws, um, keeps coming up, um, from various people, including the finance committee. What's the net? What's the net profit for it? It would seem that it costs about a hundred and fifty K. We can compare the bylaw cost to.
That's actually a good question, but it's, there has to be decision from the council, not about dollars and just the both. Regime of the bylaw collection.
Yes, but I'm just saying, I mean, uh, people keep asking the question, do we really make money? We make a hundred and fifty K.
Apparently we make a lot of money. It's a lot of money for this thing.
Yeah.
Well, we gross a lot, right?
No, no, we net a lot.
We did a hundred and fifty K.
Okay.
On, on this year's budget. Now, in previous years, um, that number was wrong because we had a lot of infrastructure within. And then never got to, you know, there wasn't, all the soft costs we bought on was workshop, put up the signs, the workshop, um, put up the pads and the, uh, meters and all that kind of stuff. And that soft cost was in the workshops. So, so I didn't believe we were making profit. I thought we broke even about a year and a half ago in my mind. But this year, all the infrastructure is in place. So it does show that we actually should be making a hundred and fifty K.
Well, you, if it's big infrastructure, like the big machines, then they're amortized or it's built into the amortization cost. So your profit is less than you think.
Yeah.
Depends on how much it costs to build those, the infrastructure.
Sorry, which line item was that now on, on page five?
Which line was what?
The, uh, the parking.
Well, there's three lines. You see those note ones? You've got a hundred and twenty-five K.
Yes.
Hundred and thirty-five K and thirty-five K.
Right.
And you had those up and later, when you get to the, the bylaw stuff, you'll see the costs. And back in the math, and about a hundred and fifty K.
So just to understand this, there's one twenty-five, one thirty-five and thirty-five, right?
Yeah.
So we're looking at about, uh, three hundred?
Yeah.
And then.
Definitely jump down to the island, actually, we'll get later.
Yeah.
Keep them in mind.
Okay, yeah.
Right?
By law, by law salaries, um, if there are labor costs for bylaw services, it's about a hundred and fourteen dollars.
And I presume we also have costs in terms of our, our fees and, and, uh, on the machines, right?
Things that's ongoing. We get a monthly, um, invoice from them, uh.
Which is not small.
It's not small.
Right.
And the technology to support it seems fairly significant as well.
Right.
Well, you jumped us ahead of this. Um, I, I have one question I asked the other night, and I mean, I guess it's not necessarily even listening. Um, the annual parking passes, it seems to have gone up. The additional passes in the issue seem to have gone up. Um, small numbers, but significant percentage ones, like two hundred and fifty percent.
I think we honed it down a bit since your comment. Don't screw that.
Not about my concern is. My, my concern is otherwise. My concern is, are there people buying additional parking passes? So when we started ticketing people for not having parking passes, suddenly everyone needs additional parking passes. Are they being misused? I'd like to understand that number, um, because I've heard undoubtedly people say, ah, yeah, she's not in your neighborhood, but someone else sold her a parking pass. Oh. Not, uh, so I think there might be a little bit of that, but not for this meeting. That, that was what made this jump, that statement jump out to me as.
I think they're placing, they also be getting people who. Who would normally have a parking pass, but it's an incentive to get one. They got a ticket.
Anyway, so we should maybe just understand that. I don't know what controls we put in place for people to get additional parking.
Um, this, just a pragmatic thing, or in order to buy a parking pass, does someone have to show that they're a village resident?
Yes, but you can go up and suddenly lost your parking pass, can't have another one. They give you one, twenty-five bucks.
Twenty bucks, yeah.
Uh, the forty, whatever it is, it's a cheap yearly pass.
Yeah.
Just rent that baby out.
Yeah, but in, in general, that's deceptive and people don't.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly. But people, residents don't tend to have that nature. Yeah, are these guys here like the P and E? It's good work when people chase you down the alley.
I don't see there.
Joe, can I just try to understand on the verse?
It's a hundred and seventy additional parking passes, right? And the residents that would do that because they, they don't believe in those park, parking fines and stuff. They don't believe in that. So they'll buy a pass and they'll give it to their friend, the high tier all the time because they don't believe in it. It's a hundred and seventeen people lost their passes last year.
And one person buying multiple passes?
Yes.
Yeah.
Just by saying I lost it.
We don't cancel, they'll cancel the old one?
They're not cancelable. They're generic stickers.
Generic sticker.
Yeah.
Oh, in Vancouver, because I've had that issue myself when I had to bring in my old sticker and they canceled it.
We don't.
It's got a number.
We don't have those.
License plate number.
Yeah, we don't, we don't have those controls. We spoke about, we don't have those controls. I believe there's some misuse going on. A hundred and seventy people didn't use their parking pass last year.
Yeah.
I think it's something we should be aware of, but I don't know.
It's not sure this is.
Placing, yeah.
Yeah. Is parking committee issue.
Yeah.
And you have to, like, in Vancouver, I need to go in and show your, that you live there. You have two forms of ID because sometimes they're company. And then put your license plate right on the sticker.
Yeah, we don't do this.
Joe, so can I just ask?
Right, right on the most.
The online version.
Mm-hmm.
Under twenty twenty-three budget.
Parking committee.
It's coming in at four ninety-one, this one four fifty-five. So what accounts for that?
The reduction in, in the building permits.
Oh, it was the building permits again. Okay, and a small difference.
Filming us.
Very good, okay.
Um, I'm surprised.
Which revenue?
Filming revenue.
Oh, yeah.
And it just. What it is, but. Heard stories of people being offered huge money for that.
So Ken, are you suggesting that we're not getting enough of a cut?
I, maybe there's a, uh, you know, much like the parking passes and some of these other things, it might be worth looking into. One of the committees.
Yeah, we don't. Pretty soon.
That's the name revenue, seven thousand down to eight thousand.
We, we don't do very much of it. And we, and we are, we're a cheap place to shoot. We have reviewed that on the previous council, couple of years ago.
So we are perhaps a little too cheap?
We can get a look at it another time, yeah.
Yeah.
That's a whole other study, yeah.
That might be a committee of some sort to look at this. These, these groups will offer huge money.
Yeah.
It's, it's one of those things, though. Uh, if you ever come from Orchard Bay and you get stuck there and you can't go the lower route, um, because they're filming, super annoying, right? Yeah.
That's.
That's always the.
That's the discussion.
Yeah.
How much of it you want.
Yeah.
Um, are there any further questions on this page or do you like? So the next page I'll move to is, um, revenues, the top line item there, starting with grants. Um, in our twenty twenty-three budget, we have a small community grant, um, we get that every year. Uh, twenty twenty-two, um, actual, uh, higher, um, we were paid, um, a special bonus in twenty twenty-two in the first quarter, uh, by the province. And they said this is not going to be, it's a one-time thing only. So it's completely historically got. Um, the I, uh, infrastructure grants, um, has increased by nine hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars. Uh, that represents the, the cash that we got in the bank. Uh, we've received that since March twenty-second, um, and that's from the growing, um, uh, growing communities fund that was paid, uh, uh, by the provincial government.
And, and the previous page five, is that right? On the online version or on the PDF?
Equals it, so, yeah. Okay, I see you've moved this to two hundred and six out, out of the twenty twenty-three budget, so assuming that's confirming that was the connector.
It is a connector.
And we're not sure what we do. So.
When does that inspire just studying?
I think it's next year, next year.
Twenty twenty-four.
When in next year?
Uh, definitely this tw- uh, December twenty twenty-four.
Okay, so we have time.
So we, when, when we're sure.
Yeah.
Sure, yeah. Should look seriously at.
But what we said, what we suggested here is it won't be happening this year.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah. Okay.
Um, we did receive forty thousand. That we did receive forty thousand, uh, back in twenty twenty-one.
That went all to surveys and studies, I think.
So that's an interesting problem. So if we don't actually do the connector, we're going to have to, we're going to be writing a check for forty thousand.
Possibly.
Get money back.
You don't, you don't get money for giving.
Has the forty thousand spent on, on that study of that?
Oh, I'm pretty sure it has. I, I would, I, I, that would be more of a public works question, uh, that I. Please.
Oh, I know. Maybe Carl has got some input on that. It's two years ago.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, I mean, as far as, uh, I, I notice more publicly than from my, uh, recent, uh. Elevation to, uh, the public worst role, but, uh, yeah, there's, there's been quite a bit of, uh, uh, landscape, uh, architecture done, um, concept or traffic flow, pedestrian flow, drainage. Uh, debate around.
We did, we did a design last year, we had all designed for.
All designed.
Which is way other budgets.
Break down to the, uh, you know, bolts.
Yeah, so it's done. And I wish.
None of that has been shown, right? We've seen the design and, and, yeah.
Change in the schedule.
Yeah.
Yeah. So that's been public.
Yeah.
So if we don't move ahead with it, we're looking at, uh, a liability here.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, percentage of the costs that we spent.
Well, hang on, Michael.
No, no, we have to give back the forty.
Forty that we got.
The money if you don't finish the project, that will be the first grand that I'll have that. But trends may be different. Maybe you can choose the wrong, but.
The next one there, uh, for twenty twenty-three is the gas tax funding, which is, uh, similar to the last, uh, last year. Um, we get two checks a year for that. That program expires, um, in twenty twenty-four. Uh, so when you look at the.
It's the, it's the end of twenty twenty-four.
Yeah, it started in twenty fourteen.
So we're going to spend, it's about six hundred K we have to spend.
We have six hundred, um, built up as a reserve currently for the funds that we've received to date, so.
Need to get into planning session, decide what to do with that.
Yeah.
It's.
But the money does need to be spent and the province is going to be looking into municipalities who haven't spent that money yet. Um, and then other grants, um, that is. Uh, there are a number of, um, awarded and, um, uh, grants, uh, kind of the Lions Bay Connector, Gas Tax, Small Community Grant, uh, which one? Oh, I am. So the, the hundred and nine thousand is for the F C M Asset Management Community Wildfire Project and, um, Emergence Support Services.
Yeah, sorry, which ones?
The one oh nine?
Yeah.
So page seven, you have some notes here.
Yeah. We talked about gas tax, Small Community Grant and Lions Bay Connector, uh, that Lions Bay Connector to the next year. Um, and then what's in the one oh nine is just, uh, the hodgepodge of what's left over, um, the asset management, uh.
So we're going to cushion these. Asset management, that was last year.
Uh, portion of it was, uh, there is still about ten grand that we need to spend for this year, uh, Community Wildfire Projects awarded, um, and so. That's rebudgeted, money needs to be spent, um, Emergency Support Services, similar things.
But it's not adding up to be really exactly the same number in the twenty twenty-three budget as the twenty twenty-two budget. But I know that one oh nine from last year's budget, most of that was done and spent.
Seventy-seven of it, right?
Okay, well, there's seventy-seven was, was spent, so we can't possibly come up with the same number again in twenty twenty-two.
Uh, I will look into more detail onto that first, uh, and, uh, I can get back to council as to specifically what was, um, received last year and what was spent in relation to those grants.
Yeah.
So Joe, just.
But it would be a huge coincidence if this year's budget was the same as last year. It's going to spend a bunch of the one oh nine, almost of it. So I think it should be a very small number, to be honest.
Wouldn't the number logically be thirty thousand?
Um, yeah, you're saying the one oh nine minus this, uh, or.
Thirty-three thousand, yeah, thirty, thirty-two, three?
Yeah, okay.
Would that, would that be?
If we've got nothing new.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
If we've got nothing new coming, you're right. There should be one hundred and seventy-seven.
Yeah, I think this covers all general grants. We've got to get other grants.
I wouldn't check. The number last year, one oh nine, was the first four numbers on this list. Yeah, I want to check quickly. I had a few houses.
I'm just saying, we're, we should be able to get some more smaller grants by the end of the year as well.
Um.
So you have to budget for something that's.
You should budget, yeah, if we know we're going to get something. But for example, um, the wildfire protection, we know we're not bringing that in the fire chief's support. He says we're not doing it. Um, the emergency services, we have an actual number from Phil or change to the. An emergency, he said he was going to apply for some grants. An emergency, he finished it, he, he said he was gonna apply for some grants, there was a number there, you can go get the actual number. And then the asset management is a, is a question of, we've done that work, but it seems like some of it flowed into this year, so what's the delta? So we have, we have the information to come up with that number, and it's not working right.
Um, I will, uh. Update everybody here, uh, on exactly what's in there. Other revenue, um, spoke the.
Before, before we go for grants and we're gonna talk about some CapEx at the end, but I just wanted to look at something else here, so. On the ICIP grants, what we said was last year we were gonna spend eight hundred and eighty-two. We've got another nine ninety-eight, so we added those two numbers together and come to one point eight 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 six oh.
Mm hmm.
That's what we've done.
Yes.
Um, flawed logic, I guess, yeah, the nine ninety-eight's great, because we haven't decided what we're gonna spend it on, and it's another thing we need to spend this. Do we have to spend that this year? Or do we not?
Don't believe there's that.
We haven't seen it yet because it's still coming to us, but okay, we've assumed here that it's something we have to spend this year, that's fine. The, but the problem with the eight, eight hundred and eighty-two, eight sixty from last year, we did do some of that. Right?
Uh, a, a small amount, just the, um, clap building, which, uh, there's not really much of it done.
No, when we get to those numbers, I'll show you later why I think something wrong with logic. Um, so we, we, we do do some of that, but a bit of small amount. But we're not gonna do this year either. We're not gonna face the clap building this year, and we're not gonna do that much in the beach park this year. So that, at one eight 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 six oh number, um, I think is inflated.
Well, it, it really doesn't matter because you can defer something, right? Because as long as the revenue equals the cost.
Sure.
Right? So let's say, let's, let's assume the cloud building is not done, what's the budget? Four nine nine nine, something like that, yeah. So you're capital cost of forty-nine and as well. So it's what we did from last year, they do every year. As long as it's not, if you get the money in you, but you didn't spend the expense, then it's a rebudget item. But this is just moving it forward here, it doesn't make any difference.
But if we're putting, if we're putting in, the, the capital is a little different because it's a hundred percent grant. But if we're putting in for the beach walk, which is a, um. It's.
About her, yeah.
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 Um, on that particular one, if we are getting, if we're gonna technically put the grant as in years revenue. We need to be appropriate amount of cost on our side because we've got a big part of it.
I agree, and, but then you just build up your surplus if you don't do the work.
But when we get to the CapEx numbers, then I'll explain to you what I think seems a little odd, and that's why I think that number should be a lot lower. Because I don't think the other side of the equation is balancing out. But we can do that when we get to CapEx. I just wanna point out the logic here, and we'll do that when we get to the end, when we get to that budget sheet.
So just, just so I understand, now, you're saying that. That we're looking only at the portions that we're getting and not the obligations that we're, uh, uh. That we're responsible for in this, is that right?
Something's not adding up for you when we get to the last page.
Okay, okay.
You wanna talk about those two grants, uh, there's a recurring, there's a regional grants, budgeted from past few years, fifty-nine thousand dollars, one hundred. And federal government grants of fifty thousand. So that's when you get that one oh nine one, and those are recurring numbers. It seems to be, uh, it's, it's.
Those would be, uh, where would those be found?
The question never asked about the hundred and nine thousand, one hundred.
Yeah.
So they're, they're just, just assuming you're gonna get those same two this year, you may not get it all.
So it's fifty plus fifty-nine point one.
What we might just do is say. Uh, decrease it by fifty percent. Yeah, because we know we'll get some.
So that, so last year, a hundred and nine, one oh nine, one hundred was, the effort message granted fifty. The wildfire grant at twenty-seven, five hundred, the emergency support services at twenty-one, six hundred. And the upper baby waterman design in ten thousand, it adds up to one oh nine, that's what we did last year. So you have exactly the same number now, with all those grants gone, seems a little odd. I'm looking at last year's budget.
Yeah, so when they did the budget months ago, they just assumed they're gonna get the same fifty-nine and the same fifty in recurring amounts.
But we're not getting those grants this year. However, they rolled them up, it's not, we're not getting the same thing this year.
So you're suggesting it shouldn't be in there at all?
Last year, last year, it was the, uh, B C carbon tax, fifty-one oh eight two.
Um, can't be that much of a coincidence, these are numbers, add up to one oh nine, that's last year's budget. It's exactly one oh nine, and so there's four numbers. And we've done this. So there's something goofy there.
Yeah, look at the different numbers, but, but they, I think what they've done when they did this is, they just assumed the fifty-nine and the fifty, because there's a, there's a number there, yeah, there's a fifty there in the asset management. So my guess is we'll probably take that down by fifty percent.
At least asset management's gone, the wildfire's gone, and then we need to decide what else we think we can get.
Yeah. So probably we'll reduce it by fifty percent.
Where, where are you finding those notes?
I'll trick, I'm gonna trick you, I was here last year.
Ah.
I dropped my last year's file, trying to say what that means, and I looked at it and it was like, the number's exactly the same, and I jumped out of it.
All right.
So what I did this afternoon, I didn't work, I didn't, not getting paid today.
And what was incurred last year was, though, was just. B C carbon tax, is that one of the ones you're talking about?
Nope.
That was paid, so the other ones may not have been paid, that's why. We may not have received the money, the only money received, fifty-one oh eight two, B C carbon tax. Twenty-six, six twenty on a regional grant, I don't know what that's for. That might have been one.
Okay, so then we did different equations, and then we, we might have made out some of the workplace, there's a great money back here, so then it's going the other way.
So we need to get the grant money.
Uh, moving on to other revenue. Um, twenty twenty budget had a hundred and ninety thousand dollars in debt, uh, we mentioned that earlier, um, it's moved it, uh, forward a year. We're, uh, not expecting that we're gonna get any further borrowing in the current year. The other big change is the bank return on investments, uh, that reflects, um, our additional interest on our savings account. Um, it is, uh, uh. Significant change from the prior year. Um, and that's.
But where's the breakdown on that? There you go, seventy?
It's just a note saying that, um, interest on savings is projected in degrees based on, uh, our new banking. Last year, we're earning about ten, two percent in interest, and then, um, beginning in May, uh, if we opened up a new bank account. Um, we expect to earn about five percent.
So, uh, a portion of this is due just to interest rate fluctuations, I'm guessing?
Correct.
Yeah.
No.
No?
No, but it's due to having your money tied up in a low interest account. So you've got a combined savings checking account, it's something you would never do personally.
Sure.
And that's what we did here, because it's easier to have one bank account rather than transferring, like, what did I do? I transferred. Five million dollars into this new account, and we have, so now we have two accounts, and it's a pain to administer. Right? Because it's a journal entry. But.
So we always had two accounts, there was a lot of talk.
We only had.
Hang, hang on a second, Ron, there was a lot of talk, uh, in the beginning that we had two accounts and we couldn't figure out what was in the second account, so we did have.
That's with firemen account.
Was it?
That's it, there's never been, or not, we have, I haven't gone back five years, I've gone back two years or three years.
But there was talk of a mysterious second account, so I'm just wondering, was, was, was it broken down?
It's a fireman account, and it still exists. Bank, I think it's still a Scotiabank, we sort of get my head around it, it's not big, but that's. It was an issue, I, I'm gonna say the mayor and ex-CEO went to Scotiabank and said. We thought there was two accounts, they said, no, you only have one, and then we came back later and they said they have two. So they've apologized to a lot of this for not giving us the advice, but at the end of the day, we're using the wrong accounts for operations. That's now changed.
So I thought it was just a hundred, it's actually a hundred and twenty-three, so.
Well, no, you're a little bit, again, because, sorry, you're only looking at seven months change, so it's bigger than you think. This is on the budget, you're only putting seven months, not all months, you're in terms of four months.
Okay. Okay. So that's seven and twelve.
Exactly, I got it.
And that's, so that's just a win for us. Four hundred and eight percent.
So is there a breakdown on how, is this all interest? Because, uh, fees were mentioned as well.
Um, the fees, so this is just, um, I, revenue, it just relates to, um, money coming in. Uh, the fees are in administration in, um, like, it's an expense item.
Lowering the expense.
Yeah, but that's, I mean, we both, uh, we tested for that, it's about four thousand dollars that we expect to save in bank fees.
Okay, so this. This amount here is simply. Been apparently achieved by segregating the account into an investment and an operating, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay.
And the bank did, uh, do us a favor, um, instead of, uh, we, we had a savings account, um, so they've. Rename or repurpose that savings account to a checking account, so we didn't have to change any of our checks or checks.
Hmm.
And then they opened up a savings, a proper savings account, and transferred money into there. Right, so now this is maybe five percent.
So my question is, how does a bank let us lose a hundred and twenty-three thousand, seven months? Over the last how many years? And, uh, and charge us fees like that?
I'm not quite sure.
Like, how do they, you, you know, are we gonna look at maybe some, some other banks?
I might be giving us a little better advice. I'm not quite sure, um, with the previous, uh, uh, people who were, had the relationship with our, um, advisors, um, had, or how much damage discussions they had. Or what, the reasons were why, but the first thing, um, when, um, uh, Rod and myself went in to meet our advisor, Bazet. Said, I can get you a lot more rates and you don't have to pay all these fees, because we're paying, paying like a dollar a check that's processed, it's crazy.
So how much did we pay in fees roughly?
About four thousand dollars.
Four thousand, okay, but let's be clear about one thing, on, on the income side here. That we've been living in a one to two, two and a half percent interest environment, uh, for a long time. And it's only recently that we can take advantage of three to five, right? I mean, that is just.
In terms of the spread, don't think in terms of the rate?
Yeah.
The spread is always about a two to three percent spread. Right? So if you're, if you're in a low interest rate environment where it's zero percent in your current account for example, but you're getting two to two point two five in your savings. It's the spread we're always carried about. So our spread was before we were two point five. Uh, now we're at five. We don't start to be at five all the time.
Sure, yeah, we, we're gonna be likely down to, down to two again.
So that's the good news, good news about it.
But if we are, we will always be a two percent saving or a two percent difference that we, we would have lost otherwise.
Well, I'm gonna say it's more because, um. Had, had, you've thought about it, we, all we've done is put it into a savings account, but why would you put it into a, a six-month term deposit? Or, or something like that, because we have, I'm gonna say we have five million dollars in the bank.
Right.
Four million is uncovered, so why not tie it the whole four million for a year?
Yeah, but if you tied it up, if you tied it up for a year, I mean, if you go back, uh, eighteen, twenty-four months or sixty months. Um, the spread is tiny, I mean, the difference between an operating and an investment account was very minimal back then, right?
No, no, I'm just saying that the spread is, a typical spread is in the current, and the savings is one and a half, two, two to two and a half percent. But if you type, the longer you type the money, your money, the long, the higher your return. And, and, um, so you can, we're limited to what we're allowed to invest in, but, yeah, we have not gone to. Just forgot the name, the, the governor who's.
Yes, for finance, sorry.
And that's it, who gives us more authority to, to invest our money, we just haven't, we never thought those terms.
They provide, give by direction as to what's a acceptable investment, so.
Yeah.
We haven't gone there yet, but we certainly will in the next few weeks.
Right. Right, but, but, I mean, this, we can talk about spread, but the fact is, is that if you go back. You know, eighteen months, two years, three years, four years, five years.
No excuse to keep it in one account, that's the bottom line.
Well, I, I'm talking about that the, that the increase is largely due to, uh, arbitrariness, which is the increase in interest rates, right? I mean, we wouldn't be at five percent unless that had occurred, which has, is a historical first in the last decade and a half.
Yeah.
Right?
I, I've heard you say twice now that it's the spread, so whether it's one percent to three percent, or three percent to five percent, it's the same two percent.
Yeah, and then you can't look at the income without doing it, actually, you don't know which money is in the bank.
Yeah, right, right.
The word walkers are saying, the difference between this year and last year is partly due to the spread, which you created, and partly due to the fact that interest rates have gone.
Uh, well, no, no, you're, you're right, so, but, but, no, no, you're right, but what you've lost is a two percent spread.
And we've lost a few percent, yes, or you have five million dollars in the bank.
No, if you lost two percent.
Hang on a second, the, but the two percent spread would be.
Trying to justify the loss.
I'm not trying to justify the loss.
Why are we even continuing on?
I think you wanna talk about it the best ways.
Joe, what's next?
Um.
What I say is true.
Okay.
No, I'm sorry, it's sad, no, we can't do that on. You can't even talk about, I can't read that on the table, no, I'm sorry. Uh, the difference between three percent and five percent is a two percent change, you know, it's the same amount of running. And so when the, the interest rate is zero percent, it's two percent, three percent, and five percent, seven percent, and nine percent. It's two percent difference.
Yeah, but the.
It's a, it's, it's the amount of funds that, that have been added are an additional two percent of our investment.
Okay, but the number you're quoting of an increase of whatever, a hundred and twenty, whatever number it is, is partly due to the spread. And partly due to interest rates this year are higher than last year.
Okay, so, no, I know you're all of that, so let's say the.
Okay, this is me though.
Okay, yeah, anyways.
I think we both correct, which is, that's fine.
We'll get a report on that sometime, we'll be on time.
Uh, I just did want to, uh, uh, before we move on past revenue, uh, just, uh, uh, make some comments. As to the property tax increases, uh, proposed rate.
What page are we on now?
Um, I'm just speaking to, yeah, um, uh, the property tax increase, um, and she's.
Okay.
Note six there.
Okay.
Note six, very well.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so, um, we get some investigation on twenty twenty-three proposed property tax increases. North Van is posing five point two four percent, West Van is at four point five percent. Vancouver is at ten point seven, Surrey at twelve point five, Langley at eleven point five, Port Moody at nine percent. Um, actually, that used to be at ten something, but then they got a bunch of, uh, feedback and decided to get it under ten percent. White Rock at seven point six, Cookwillman five was already fifty percent. Um, so the seven percent increase is not, uh, significantly different from what's being experienced, um, throughout the, 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 the lower mainland. Um, as far as what, um, numbers, how numbers could change, if we did a zero percent increase, we'd have basically the same, um, amount of, uh. Revenues last year at one point six, um, eighty-three, um, at a three percent increase, it goes to one point seven, so it's like an extra fifty grand. At five percent increase, it's an extra eighty-four grand over last year. I'm at seven percent, it's a extra hundred and seventeen thousand in revenue over last year, which is currently reflected in models. And then if it was ten percent, it's an extra a hundred and sixty-eight thousand. Um, based, um, on an average, um, uh, increase per houses, but, uh, they would, seven percent increase is about, uh. Hundred ninety dollars, um, increase per, um, household, um, and, uh, three percent increase is about eighty-four dollars per household.
Before you sort of ask questions on the percentage increase. You have to think in terms of what you plan over the next five years. There's a wish list here, I think about eight million dollars over the next three years. We budgeted, it's all you get grants for all of it, you know, that's not realistic. It's what's the flavor of the day, like, depending on what the, the government of the day wants to finance. What your percentage will be, let's call it something, typically a twenty to thirty percent, it seems to be, that you have to pay if you're parking tax and reserves. And can you borrow? Right, so there's other, we've taken our, I think we took out all borrowing for the next two years.
Yeah, no borrowing, um, and, um, we've moved the, um, uh, proceeds from sale on land, as that is indeterminable at this time.
So last year, there was eight million dollars over twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five, the sale of land. And I think that what you're the one saying, it's, because you're more involved, it's, it's more discussions than. And moving forward with it, the minute you, the council says we wanna move forward with it, and they start doing some work on it, we'll put it in the budget. But for now, it was eight million in and eight million out, so it doesn't make a difference. Um, but it's something to consider, but don't, we should, we should talk about the property tax percentage increase at the very end.
True.
Right, with that, um, I will move forward to, uh, the next page as we're getting into our departmental expenditure process. Uh, so I'm looking at, um, like, we have a general administration, a general funded administration.
Page what? Okay, page eleven?
Page nine, page nine.
So no significant changes here uh from the previous versions, other than um. There was a discussion on um internal allocations, and this is just uh our uh. Allocation between administration and public work salaries to uh. Utility departments for general overhead that's been incurred on behalf of those departments. This number um has not changed since the earliest budget I could find. Uh, so I went back that five years, uh six years, and it's always been the same number. So you're looking at in the line um about halfway or just over under halfway.
Two more.
Internal allocations.
Sure, where you're looking at.
Internal allocation. Oh, uh, general fund administration. So um if the the change here is um I proposed is the, if this is just moving money between different places. But the only difference here is that um it's a, I took the fifty-three thousand dollars. Uh, that's always been there and then it's inflated it by two percent, kind of like the last three years or four years.
And this is which line item?
Internal allocations.
Okay.
So you'll see that there's a change of eleven thousand dollars, um. It just, these were adding an extra eleven thousand dollars to um reflect overhead costs incurred on behalf. Uh, sewer, uh utter solid waste.
And yeah, because it was sixty-five in the one that I'm looking at, right?
Yeah.
It was fifty-three and now we're sixty-five.
Yeah, it used to be fifty-three and that number hasn't changed in years.
Yeah.
And that was a question that was brought up by the finance committee as to why as an engineer. Um, the other change um was for uh salaries and benefits, which are uh projected to decrease by almost forty thousand dollars. Um.
From. Where's that model?
I don't have the model on the package. I uh which one are we asking? That's um, I I did print that out, I mean, it's uh, it's uh, that's some sensitive information, so I'm sure if I wanted to include that.
It's normal to have.
Uh, yeah, oh, no, it's. Folder. So you open up the folder. Yeah, yeah.
Something different.
Got going to budget, so then there's a payroll analysis, that's all I'll achieve.
There's a part of body budget.
That's important. Payroll loss. Yeah, yeah.
People crap on the property.
We don't have actual terms of the budget.
Yeah. Um.
So it's quite a big swing from what we saw in the package on the website, right, in salaries and benefits.
Yeah, trying to cover it down.
Yeah, we, yeah, it's more streamlining, uh but also recognizing there's certain people just haven't been here all year. So that's persons here for three months or six months. Um, I can read some numbers. You know, at least I'll give you a general description. I'm worried there's a lot of time to this.
And can you share that with us in the in the closed meeting or another time?
Yes, um. So admin is just the sum of. So we're up to building. Up to work, below building. You know, five, six, seven, it's like ten, something.
So we agreed at the beginning of the meeting, Ken, this is before you came.
Yeah.
That if we had something that came up, we wanted to go enclosed, that we would have a closed session at the end. Um, in my email, I asked earlier, was that session meant to be for us to look at this model? Um, I would suggest that's what we do.
Sure.
I just put that in there.
I mean, I didn't.
Came up, so.
Yeah, 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 and I think this, I think this.
And then, yeah, because if you want to see it, but I can read it. Joe, the numbers still have.
Sure, we'll uh at the end of this, we'll go into close. It's not building.
Well, certainly, certainly. Okay, there's been a big swing.
We're kind of bumbling around the table sometimes. Carl, are you able that you're okay?
Uh, muted.
With thumb up or thumb down?
You muted.
He's muted.
Okay.
Are can you just generally, yeah, so we can move on to the payroll if you want.
Yeah.
Wait, madly, if you can't hear, I guess, be the answer.
There is a three percent here.
Okay, thank you.
Everybody who is non-union is the same as last year. That we are down one position, so. For example, C A O, CFO is jumbled, but over a year, we're the exact same, same with the C A O and CFO, the sellers are the exact same. I think it's off by six thousand, there's a three percent increase and there's one position that we've eliminated. And that's an. Administrative assistant, so we're, we've only replacing that person with a summer student, and that's it. That's the only differences in administrative salaries.
Okay. Let's go one more, quick look at it when we go in class. But I am pleased to see the big difference from what we had on Friday night to now, there obviously has been some work done. Because now the salaries have come down.
Yeah, because this is soon to everybody's for the whole year, we'll we'll get replacements, but now it's more.
Yeah, so, yeah, it'd be great to see that, but I'm pleased to see it's going the right way, but.
So to our question from the gallery, this is some evidence of what the direction that we're going.
And the other thing with the transition period we're in right now, I I'm, and I'm just ballparking, but we expect that we're going to be higher than. In the future here, if we're talking about potential restructuring or whatever this might be.
What are you getting at? What do you mean?
Uh, I'm getting that, there's a potential for more saves.
Oh, no, yes, exactly, I I urge you more costs.
No, I I'm expecting that that number to potentially come down in the future.
Yeah, because we're, we change to go around. Exactly.
But just.
Better change.
Joe, to be clear, you're projecting a a thirty-nine thousand dollar drop?
Yes.
As opposed to. A thirty-four thousand dollar increase. On Tuesday night.
Okay.
Swing of, swing of eighty K.
So, yeah, I look forward to hearing how that would be accomplished, given all the.
So we're gonna get enclosed.
Yeah, I, it just seems remarkable to me.
Something to look forward to, that's great.
Let me just.
Okay, let's defer that. Uh, Joe?
Yep, um, before I flip the page and move on to um by law services, was there any other questions on administration?
Uh, in terms of amortization and in terms of the 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 loans that we have, various things that the loans are for, is that broken down? Am I, and there's sort of just the information that would be available?
Yeah, we know exactly what the loans are if you have care to know. Okay, um, we we look forward, we know right up, we know the dollar to twenty twenty-one, we know there's a new loan for a. Skitter, I think in twenty twenty-two.
Yeah, that went through October the fourth, yeah.
And then we know the advertised, we know the payments, there's a schedule that we're just updating it right now. Uh, but we have it all for you.
Okay. Is there value in looking at borrowing from ourselves? Well, there's certain funds that we have, I I don't know what 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 the payments are on the money that we're borrowing. But we also have money that's invested that we're able to loan to ourselves. That's what the property, the money that's been been received from property sales, we can loan to ourselves and then repay that, is that right?
Well, yeah, I mean, maybe Colby explained it the other night, maybe we do another time. That to do with recently, and we sold down the waterfront, because you have to create another waterfront access, he's doing the same thing. So you can't use it to buy, to fix a road up at Sunset, so therefore you play. Cooking the books, I guess, and you loan it to yourself, so you don't have to go pay interest, that's something different.
That's a very good question, I don't know if you can take restricted funds and pay down debt. You can't take restricted funds and build a new road, you know that, to pay down debt, I don't.
I think you couldn't, what if the, if the debt was there to build the road, is it the same thing?
Didn't you also mention previous council and borrowed money that we. That that we didn't spend, that we could have paid back. And did we have money that that we're paying interest on that we'd be better off to. Pay back, to pay back or pay back that.
Municipal finance authority funds.
True different question, we borrowed money that went into a reserve. Because we didn't do the project, remember it was at six hundred thousand. Whether or not that loan is still outstanding, I don't know, so we'd have to see, is that loan still outstanding? Can we take money to pay it off? That's something we have to look at.
All right, my understanding is that some of the municipal finance authority fund money cannot be paid back because it's there. So.
Spend it on something useful.
But maybe others, anyway, that's.
We've got a lot of things to say, but I don't know the answer.
But yeah, but we certainly don't, don't need to be, yeah, we have lots of things to spend money on, that's for sure, so. So, just in terms of whether there's any economies and, you know, in a percentage to us, we're talking about earlier.
We're talking about money, if you're paying five percent interest and you only earn two. So I'm a tough one.
Yeah, yeah.
So can I just circle back to professional fees here, like in the in the copy that we got originally? That was at two thirty-two, right, budgeted, then it dropped to one ninety-two. So what is that forty-seven dollar difference?
Um, so there's a reduction and um but budgeted costs associated with.
Sorry, Joe, okay, that's a good question, can we answer it?
Say what?
Can we answer it in the post?
So this refers to a closed topic?
Okay, what page are we on, is it that question?
That was page nine. So, so just, so it had been set at two thirty-two, right, in the original one? And it dropped forty thousand. One ninety-two, so we need to then talk about that forty thousand dollar difference.
Okay, I've got one, one other question, um. So on professionals fees and contractors, the contractors, we've got seventy thousand. Um, admin, and Ron, that would include you, correct? You're a contractor, you're not under staff.
Uh, that's correct, yes.
So that's everyone, okay. So there's no, so it'll be people like New Hall and. That's probably the only two then, right, that go into.
That's right, because Barrett's now.
Oh, I thought, yeah, falls in a search, sorry, he's in a different page, he's not an admin, okay.
Our key receipt, I'll flip to by law services, which is your next header.
Hang on, are we, are we bad administration?
This is any other questions, I think we've got it covered.
Actually, maybe we need to get that one closed, well, there's not any up in my head, it can't really, uh, uh, sorry, we're not forecasting Ron. I guess past the interim position, okay, all right, again, okay.
Um, Mr. Chair, if I could just interject, I'm gonna be kicked out of where I'm, uh, where my hat, I'm sitting. The McGill Library in Montreal, um, in in thirty minutes. So if there's something that I can provide input into specifically on the capital stuff, now might be a better time rather than trying to uh do it from my phone on the streets type of thing.
Yeah, uh, Joe, is there?
Yeah, we could go to public works right away and then go to um capital expenditures.
Okay, so.
PDF, I think, with fourteen, that's public works.
Okay, so which page do we want to talk about first?
Page fourteen of the PDF.
Okay.
I think.
Page sixteen of the new material, Carl.
Okay, I'm looking at the one on the website, so I'm looking at public works.
Fourteen, fourteen, Carl, yeah.
And. Uh, and the numbers are. Very slightly different on totals, so pretty much you got the same thing, I'm not sure where the change was. We called you pretty much got what we're looking at on total anyway.
Yeah, so the 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 total from one to the other hasn't changed, uh, I mean, the uh. The the only aspect that you need to understand here particularly is that the Bayview Bridge over um Alberta Creek. Rehabilitation project is an expense, not not a capital project, and that's why you see it here.
Yeah, we've got that in the notes.
All right, Joe, uh, Carl's got half an hour to lead us through this and and open it up and he can comment.
Okay, so the um, uh, so that was the main line item here, that's increasing what Carl's referring to as the maintenance cost. Uh, the twenty twenty-three budget is three hundred and sixty-seven thousand um in the new materials, I don't think that's substantially changed from prior year. So the um, uh, the twenty-two actual is three hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars. And that's for the the bridge and it is a maintenance cost, not a capital cost, there's a decrease um. Professional fees and contract services of sixty-six thousand dollars and.
Can you give an explanation on that?
Yeah, so the um, there was, uh, we used to have um. Eighty-one thousand last year was made up of contract engineering services of five thousand, which um were. Um, it's just a general fund if we need to hire another engineer, and so we've also got that for in the current year of five thousand dollars. Um, then the upper um B V water main survey and design was budgeted for thirty-six thousand dollars last year. Uh, we have a ten thousand re-budget for that for the current year, so that makes up your fifteen thousand dollars in the current year for professional and contract services. Last year, we had thirty thousand dollars that was um uh budgeted for uh the engineering traffic review of CN crossings. But that was done by I S L Engineering, and that's been done. And then um the three twenty-five driveway bridge rehabilitation, we had a budget of ten thousand dollars last year. Um, and that was uh uh done, so um our budget is currently at fifteen thousand, um, and. Primarily is for the CN um stuff and the baby water main master.
Okay, so so we haven't, in this line item here, we aren't actually, aren't actually planning any design. As fixed this year.
Not in this.
We're getting the CapEx, we've got some of that stuff, but it's not. Do more progress in CapEx anyway, okay, that's fine. Um.
Joe, shouldn't it be twenty-five thousand?
No, that's just a type on on your notes there.
I mean, just one other thing on the uh. The salaries and benefits, um. Same service this year as last year, um. But I guess the question is if we do this mini recycling thing. Paul, and we and we we agreed to do that and we extend the workshop um Friday morning, Saturday morning. Well, I think the Friday morning doesn't cost us, Saturday morning, pick up for another three months. It's a fairly small cost, but didn't you factor that in or not?
Um, so I did not, but you know, that would be in the solid waste budget anyway, um, so.
The staff, the staff time is in the solid waste budget as well?
I would assume so, uh, Joe.
Uh, the staff time, uh, it's not built into there, so what the um, uh, original, I, we have a certain, we're running a surplus. Where I think it was in perks of like ten or a thousand, uh, so in one of these um pages in the notes. So the um, if there is um, uh, an additional time cost incurred, if we do the. Open up the the yard uh on Saturdays uh for recycling, the um.
So we've got the yard open on Saturdays during the summer for the bears anyway, and the question was if they extend it three months, that's all we look at, so in a small delta.
Yeah, small.
But that's the intention, so I don't want to get there and then someone says, oh, we little budget, we have to do it next year, right?
It's currently just um reserved for the uh any costs that's uh anticipated to uh be incurred for opening that up. It's gonna be offset against the surplus and I believe it's perks, but we'll get to that.
Okay.
Yeah, and I, I think, you know, the internal allocation number you see there, uh, you know, some of that could be visited on solid waste. You know, the the utility budgets, the water, the solid waste and the wastewater. That is actually the primary use of public works, uh, um, time and and resource, and that's in those utility budgets, so. This fifteen thousand is sort of uh a little bit of wiggle room, I suppose.
Okay, um, so I I would suggest we move to the very last page, which is the proposed capital request, uh, so while we have Carl on.
Page what?
Final page.
Fun stuff.
Uh, so I mean, before we touch on that, I'll just reemphasize that, uh, you know, the 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 biggest individual budget in in our year. Is the water budget, um, which is largely uh public works time. Uh, for inspections and the water, water plant operation and analysis. Um, but that's pretty much been cited already uh in in the um utility budgets that that are imminent, so. I don't think there's anything in there that would be a surprise, um, you know, there's nothing in there that I saw that I would want to sort of flag for your attention, so. As as far as I'm concerned, we can go on to the CapEx, uh, unless you have some question.
In the the twenty twenty-three proposed budget uh for capital expenditures, um, total capital expenditures requested are two point two million dollars. Of that two hundred and forty-five thousand related to the water um department and one point nine uh million for general. Um, the lines, Bay Beach Park, we're like revitalization project, four hundred and ninety thousand is ongoing, maybe that doesn't happen, it's for the next year. So we can discuss if you want to move that down the road or not.
We're finding that on this page.
On the very last page.
It's, I've got to calculate, I've got to realize it. I've got a question on that, so if we did do four hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars of the beach park. It would equate to three hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars in grants.
Yeah, we get reimbursed uh as presented up a cost incurred.
Yeah, so we need to get three hundred and sixty seven thousand dollars in grants to do that. Um. And then on the fact building, you you got the village wall upgrade. I assume you, you know, this is not the village wall upgrade. Is that that's the fact book fact building, right?
Uh, village hall upgrade um is and from my understanding, it's uh that was um, you have that open there? It's for um climate or that's get better windows and.
Okay.
Just not that's not the cloud building. I just in.
That's the.
Like. Time cap for your last.
Four ninety nine is is.
I guess the question arises, where is class then?
That currently is not uh in there because uh people, there's, you know, beginning progress from what I understand in the current year.
No, I think I know. I just got a budget today.
You did? Oh, great. You know, then we got to.
Don't take a look at it. I run a book ahead, put there, I think, and say that going, say, rules.
According to this, we're talking about the four ninety nine is the village beach park. That's the line of the beach park revitalization.
Yeah.
So the village wall upgrade, hundred and twenty thousand, um, that was related to getting a grant, as I recall, um. Didn't, and it didn't actually happen. It all fell down.
Well, it it there was, this was the energy efficiency upgrades and and uh then we discovered that the uh power wasn't sufficient.
Well, that was part of it.
Right.
This, so that, no, you want to think of getting rid of the, you get think of getting rid of the.
The oil.
Oil, yes.
Yes, neck got hung up on the tower.
Yes, it did. Yeah.
So I don't know what this one is, but there was this talk of actually doing upgrading the windows.
Yeah, so the the hundred and five thousand is for um was proposed by Nye, the replacement of the oil furnace with a heat pump, uh, new hall windows. What's a night hall on the oils?
What's that?
They replaced them, okay?
Um, no, the idea is to get rid of the oil tank.
Um, and move to heat pumps, which we don't have sufficient power supply.
The problem with that was, isn't enough power for heat pumps.
Yeah.
So we need to new drop a new transformer. And it got all over with petrol, and we decided we couldn't afford it, so it got shelved. So it's in here now again, um. Then, yeah, we should review that. I'm not sure what Nye had in mind, but we need to look at the breakdown of that and how it's going to work. I can't remember the numbers.
Any thought to that, Carl?
No, uh, this is uh, this is not anything that Nye mentioned. I I it it's speaking as, you know, from now, it was six, seven years ago, um. The heat pump that we have there now, which is used for air conditioning, um. It clearly handles the summer power load. Um, I'll take somebody's word for it, that it doesn't handle the winter uh requirement. But that is a.
The heat, the heat pump does the offices. It goes about the whole.
Ah, okay. Yeah, that is oil, that is oil heated. And if if that was to be uh replaced, then obviously we'd have.
Yeah. Yeah, it is one of the significant activities that we want to do through our climate action commitments. You know, we have a commitment useful to be climate neutral um or carbon neutral, so should I say, and we're not there. And that's the biggest probably the biggest differentiator. That's in the fuel that goes into our trucks. That's also another discussion.
Um, uh, I have to say that this is nothing that Nye briefed me on, so I can't really add very much.
Public works a priority for Nye then.
No, no, he gave me his priorities, and this was not on it.
Okay.
Does that mean the one twenty gets moved on?
Nope. It was um, there was a question mark from Nye's spreadsheet to be happy. So that's probably why you didn't discuss it. Are we not a high priority?
What what was there? Was there a possibility of doing some of the energy upgrades? Uh, like the windows um without doing the uh heat pump and 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 thereby occurring the uh the power uh issue, which made that impossible?
Well, there 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 was an option, but that never it can't be counted as a package.
Right.
It never, it never happened because of the cost cost enough because of the power.
Yeah.
Um, the committee didn't go back to coming up with another proposal. Um, so that has to be for a future discussion.
I recall Normal said uh the economics were better to keep the oil tank. That's what I saw. He said, uh, you can't compete with that at this time with that heat pump and the cost.
Well, I think his words were that, uh, anyway, it was interesting. Oil is a very dense.
Fuel, fuel.
Yeah, we know that. Yeah. Um, but the question was, can we still benefit i- at least in part from her?
Doesn't sound like this is moving anywhere in the next seven months. Unfair to say.
Yeah.
Not a priority. Something we look at.
My is me was even, we should be moving on this, you know, as soon as possible in terms.
There might be some mentally, there might be some design consultant input that you might want to do in the next seven months. So maybe there's a small budget we want to put in there to explore this further.
Sure.
I mean, we can't just give up on it because we have.
Could you put it on your push next year? Sounds like this has been ongoing for years.
Yeah.
Um, no, it came it came up last year. It came up through the the climate action stuff. Um, it has been, it's been mentioned in the past. You used to get money called for for doing a carrot report and and we don't get that anymore. So now we've got this. That's the guest that the other text. Um, so yes, we are going to have to look at it. But I guess this year, it's not going to get, it's not going to get installed this year, that's for sure.
Why don't we put, why don't we just put twenty in this year and postpone the hundred to next?
Well, I mean, you know, depend, I I don't know what the the underlying grant requirement is, uh, but you know, you could do something like windows that, you know, that's that's not the uh credit, that's not a dependent or or uh a precursor to anything. So, you know, that's going to be more than twenty, but I I I don't know what the grant situation is. Uh, Council Abbott, was it a matching grant or so the one twenty was our contribution or that we had to spend to get the grant?
He's got a hundred percent he granted, correct? Nye budgeted a hundred percent for grants to do this in twenty twenty four, not twenty twenty three.
That would be a good year to do it in, quite frankly.
And it's by my dream, so.
So we need to know what the grant requirements are, right? Before we allocate anything.
Yeah, what we do though, as we say, is it is it something that we could apply for a grant? There's there's some numbers here. They just can't apply for grants. Um, why does he say twenty twenty four? You'll put it in twenty twenty three.
I have no idea. That's where you put it.
My my suggestion is tw- twenty five for now. Twenty twenty five for now.
Just to move, just to move the topic along. I'm okay with that. We're never going to get something ready to install this year.
So.
That's next year. Okay, yeah, no problem. Uh, the next, uh, the biggest item there is um uh related to fire or road paving. This came up in the finance.
Can we just get back to the beach folk? Yep. Or do, so we, I don't sure where we got this number from. Um, this comes from the, because the committee's been, did a bit of a forecast. Was this the number that we came up to with David Lee that we needed to put in the next grant report?
Yes.
It sounds high. Which one, which one are you looking at?
Nice.
Five hundred, five hundred thousand if you spend this year on the beach park.
The biggest number behind that, that's on, yeah, let's call.
Yeah, full grant, full budget, just balance of twenty twenty two work carried forward into twenty twenty three. And the balance, five hundred and thirty five thousand twenty twenty four.
Um, I believe the entire budget is um.
One million and seventy thousand.
Yeah. I got all the VR reports and the QKR report, um, importantly, that's the same.
That's not session. Is that in that report, David Lee, through the committees, to deliver cash flow, what we need for this year? Is that the number that we carry? It sounds higher than what I thought it would be. A lot higher.
So I'm not sure how the uh the entire five hundred thousand dollars for the current year was arrived at. I know how much were um the grant is for. Um, the amount being incurred in the current year is um, I think in the hands of the uh the Public Works Department on we have the contracts and to start doing it. So we had approved for fun.
I I think, I think in all due respect to call, um, the committee knows where more than the call knows.
Oh, sure.
I'm sure you'll get up to speed or anything too soon.
He's going to join us at some point.
Um, but uh it sounds like. Need to go back and get the number that David Lee gave you for that report and see what it was. And that's the number we should put in here.
David.
I mean, then, and to my other turn.
Okay.
And then to my other question I mentioned earlier, if it was five hundred thousand, that equates to three hundred and sixty four thousand in grant money. You should go back to your page two of your sheet, which doesn't add up. I need to adjust the grant expectation for this year. It's it's not what it, it's not that full amount by any stretch.
Yeah, I think he broke it for cooking expenses over two years. If I were not expecting the the first year, so so the first year will be will be underspent and the second year will will have pushed the money forward, but I I don't know what. I I think that I recall that kind of discussion, but I don't know.
So Neville, what you're suggesting is that.
We need to go back and rework those two numbers clearly and then get keep turning back. So we have a look at them, but that that it's not doesn't make sense to me from what we think, but it's glad David Lee's number, you know.
Okay, and that we basically need to allocate a third of this as an expense, right?
Uh, no, I think that's how it works. I think what we do is the capital is what it's going to cost to do the work.
Yeah.
Joe, correct me. On the other side of the equation, what the grant money you're getting would actually be seventy three percent of whatever the capital is, right?
Okay, okay.
Um, but that number's not adding up, so we need to go back and fix the other number on the revenue table.
I understand what you're saying.
And just.
As far as, as far as the internal work is concerned, you know, we've got, uh, I don't know how much that is. Uh, Council Average is correct. I I don't know what the current plan is. But uh, I do know that we have probably November and December, six weeks left in this year to do construction. It's not going to happen now until the end of summer. And so it's going to be probably the maybe late October through mid December. So can we spend four ninety nine in that period? Uh, I I unlikely.
No, no.
And Joe, what's the page? And we're going to be going back to to adjust some?
On the revenue stage, we had all the grants.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so we can move along because I think Carl's going to run out of time here.
Yeah, I mean, the the man has come around twice now saying in French, uh, do you know that we close at nine?
Okay, well, then maybe Carl, we can just throw out a a high level question for you quickly because I have a bunch of reason. It's a lot of stuff not making sense here. Um. So my first edit on a on a higher philosophical level, I'm not sure why we're doing this much design work on roads and or wood and storm when we've got two big projects already completely designed shovel ready, can get grants for those. So I think we should be wondering why we keep designing things we can build. I mean, that's something you should question just generally.
Yeah.
Um, why don't you, why don't you comment on that?
Okay, well, I I I'll try and comment briefly. It's a, it's a long discussion. Um. My understanding uh from my debrief of Nye is that um for grants that we can be expecting in the future, uh, we miss you um are going to be in the uh uh so the sexy things are going to be uh green projects. Uh, but the only project we want to do in uh in terms of green is maybe uh EV charging station and perhaps uh a green drainage type problem, type uh type projects. The rest are going to have to be internally funded, and I think the idea was to do these initial designs to see where where we stand, to see what sort of money that we're going to need to pull out. That that's my best understanding from Nye at this stage. I I agree. There's a lot of design projects and a lot of building projects, but that I believe was the intention.
Hmm, okay. Um, I've got one other quick one for you, Carl. Um, we can, we actually discussed this without your guest. This geohazard mitigation of Alberta Creek debris flow, hundred ninety thousand dollars. Um, do you know what's going on with that one?
I I no, is the short answer. I I don't know what that is. That was not mentioned. Uh, so I think that is, that is a a garbled line item. We have, we.
Maybe I can fill you in. I I think, and I didn't have time to get checked. I think this is something that came up in the previous council. Um. It came to a closed meeting in cause Peter wanted to move ahead and do this work. I don't remember the hundred ninety thousand dollars, but the project sounds the same. And he was telling us we need to move for on the year when he wanted to use a budget item, unbudgeted item. And then what we started, I read through it to the seventh period. This is just the design costs. He said, no, 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 that's everything. And it wasn't. It was just the design cost. This is a multi-million dollar project. But I think if it's the same one, we need to take a step back on this thing and decide what we're doing.
Yeah, I don't know. We don't even have a street called Mountain View. So I don't know what this is. What I do know is that we have a major drainage issue uh from Mountain down mid Bayview all the way to Stewart Road. Uh, and that's not in here. Um, and it was in the paperwork that I saw uh during discussion with the Finance Committee. So frankly, I I I don't know what this is.
This is my least favorite geotek who has an engineer, Mr. Freely. It's one of his projects. Um, and I'm sure it's the same one, and it's several million dollars worth of work that hasn't been estimated. This was just the design thing. Um, so we really need, I think we should take that, this hundred ninety thousand dollars for geohazard mitigation um of Alberta Creek. That is just design cost. It's not the cost of the project.
Yeah, and I'll also just point out that Alberta Creek, uh, the 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 geohazard, at least the debris flow risk has been addressed. It's been channelized um by the province uh in the eighties.
So this is someone has gone up there and decided that one section of that work is 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 vulnerable, it's low, it's not, it's not going to be sort of whether it's current risk codes or not, or whatever it is.
Yeah, I mean, these things are all done on a risk-based analysis, and and that may be. But what I do emphasize is that one of the most important projects that Nye mentioned to me is we have, we have three road projects that were keeping him awake at at night. Um, and the drainage down the side of mid Bayview was one of them. Why? Because that uh ditch, which is currently aligned with uh rotted out, galvanized hot pipe uh is it's now um going under the road and affecting the properties on the downhill side of side of the Bayview. And the number there was also a hundred ninety.
So here's the hundred ninety, geohazard mitigation of Alberta Creek debris flow risk to Mountain View. Insulated vulnerability at the pipe crossing Alberta Creek at two sixty meter elevation. On the right bank, the buried pipe follows a bulldoze grade toward Timber Top Road. Potential for debris to
Timber top?
Timber top road.
Okay.
Potential for debris to a vaults onto the right bank. Follow the descending grade and affect houses on Timber Top Road and down slope. So it it doesn't really say what the one ninety is going to do. Or you're saying it's just a study?
Yeah.
Yeah, Neville knows.
He's got it here for a high priority.
So this is Alberta Creek affecting Timber Top?
Yeah.
So it's at the top end.
I don't know. I don't know that well because it didn't go anywhere when I pointed out that do we have several million dollars to do this work? So why are we going to go study it? Just just find out how we're going to pay for it first.
So but how would, how would Alberta affect Timber Top geographically?
Well, what if left to flow after, I get that.
Well, yeah, okay.
All right, so I I don't know. I think we need um.
Are you saying that the one nine, it might be a misunderstanding of the one ninety for baby road?
I I think that's what it is. Yeah, I I think there's may even just be some line swap because there's uh, you you know, the argument could be made, that's a provincial problem. It's it's uh, it's modi infrastructure that might not have been done properly in the eighties. I know exactly where he's talking about. The the there is a bridge across Alberta Creek to carry the 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 water across from Magnesia. But I I think, I think a line got swapped here somewhere in in the process, but the one ninety, I believe, the the number that I, that is the number that I mentioned to be the the project that we really, really do need to be talking about is the self-funded baby drainage problem. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Now, that project has been designed, uh, that was designed about three, four, maybe even five years ago. Um, and so the cost would need to be updated, but that is the cost as far as I, as far as I knew.
What's the baby drops to two, two, two point two something, two change? Million.
That included, uh, you you probably know more about this.
Well, that was the whole project including the water pipe in the in the G R V.
Yeah, that's right. This was, and and the idea was to do it in phases, that this is just the drainage part, not the the pipe in um mid Bayview.
So I I think that's something we should be looking at.
Yeah.
Sipping that out, but the the original project, if you remember, had a buried sewer line for a big stormwater. Which I don't think that was because you were digging up the whole road. I think we should be daylighting the thing and going back to the plan we have now, but that's not even on this list.
That's not on the list, a- and and that would actually be potentially one of the few uh grant fundable projects of there's no grant in application right now, but that's great.
We gotta, we gotta keep in perspective. It's a two million dollar project. Let's agree it is two million dollars, can be fine by. It's not going to happen in the next seven months.
No.
Yeah, so it could, it could be pushed forward because in year twenty twenty four and twenty twenty five, we've got millions of dollars budgeted.
The 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 question is, should we be doing a redesign for that now? To sort it out so that we can separate out just the stormwater part. What does that look like? And that's not, doesn't seem to be here.
But what you could do is you could, we could take this one ninety and use it.
Yes. For for moving that forward.
Okay, well, assuming we don't, assuming we don't actually need the one ninety urgently for something.
But again, if it's, it's a big dollar. But again, if it's, it's a big dollar item, if you feel next week it's important, redo the budget, redo the capital budget.
Well, we've got to see the budget, see the text right by next week.
No, if it's, if it's a grant item. No, but if you're gonna, well, I guess you're right.
What is, what is.
If you get to do both one nineties, um, it's a bit of an issue.
So it sounds like we need to find out how important this one ninety is, or whether it should be here or not, and that we need to add something for the Bayview project. To move this forward.
Do we have nothing for the Bayview project right now?
No, no. Seems like we've got the wrong, I think we've got the wrong step on this, yes.
Yeah, I think it's, I think. We need to look into that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so let's go into the next meeting, we'll, we'll give some thought to one ninety.
Yeah, where that one ninety is allocated.
I think we're giving some.
One ninety in place.
Sure, I think we're giving some thought to a lot of these, certainly we're gonna give the thought to the beach park one.
Well, let me, let me. Uh, they they budgeted four ninety-nine for twenty twenty-three to do on the beach park. The grand budget is three hundred ninety-two, so it's roughly seventy percent. Out of the eight eighty-two, ninety is to do the.
Yeah.
I think that was the point you brought up.
There's a point brought up, yes.
So it is that, that is, that's included in the eight eighty-two for grants, four ninety-nine for CLAT, three ninety-two. For, um, Beach Park, for the grants.
That's where that number came in, okay, but we're not doing flat.
Well, if you're not doing flat, then I'm wondering, well, we're hoping to do flat.
Yeah, we're not doing that this year.
We don't know that. Like I said, I just got the budget today. Can we do, well, we don't know that, but, but again, all the expenses are for CLAT too, so it doesn't make any difference for your budget. The beach park, it does, because the grant does not equal the expenditure, and that was counter for that.
Okay, but then cat should be on the list.
Slide is on the list.
No, we need, it's not on the list, isn't.
You've taken the grant, but you haven't spent the money.
I haven't spent the money, no. Um, so that would just go to.
I think we need some more work on this page, to be honest, and we need some background.
Yeah, so just, I mean, uh, they're now giving me the really stink eye, so just. So the the only other one, the eighty thousand dollar, uh, item for the highway tank replacement. The highway tank was inspected, diver inspected, uh, a couple of months ago, and is found to be spalling inside. Uh, it is currently in use in part of our potable water network, it's, it's, it's currently acting as an air break, air gap, I mean, sorry. Uh, um, and it needs to be replaced with a PRV and surge tower. And and that is, that was Nye's best guess at the engineering cost for that. Um, that's just the the design costs, uh, but that tank is, is. Close to the end of its life, it it really needs to be put on a schedule, and this is the first part of it.
Final fact, so that sounds, that that's something that sounds to me like when you dismember a plane, yeah, we need to just push that up the list and make that the number one priority.
Almost, yeah, I mean, you know, in terms of, uh, of critical path items, that is probably close to the top. Uh, it's certainly not one of the bigger, um, cost items, no.
But yeah, but when we, we're looking at including that cost, because that's something we have to replace.
We have to do it, yeah.
By using rules of thumbs, using rules of thumb, um, we know the PRV costs half a million bucks.
Yeah.
Here you're removing a tank, you've got a hundred thousand design costs, and you do it in a ten-to-one factor, it's a million-dollar project. It's somewhere between three-quarters of a million and a million dollars that we need to spend.
Yeah, I think that's probably fair, and and the village is implicated. The village doesn't seem to have much appetite for more above-ground PRVs, um, at, you know, there's an operating cost implication there as well as a, uh, build cost.
So now let's, let's concentrate on what we need to do soon for this year.
Yeah, so I mean, that, that highway tank thing, I think is vital, and, uh.
Is it on the budget?
Yep, yeah, it's the second last item on the, on the.
The designs on the.
The science on the.
Designs on the budget, we might even want to start building those things sooner, or if not, we should need to plan to do it next year.
Correct.
This might be where we're spending all our sexy new million dollars that we got, just be going into something like this.
Well, don't, I I think a water tank is sexy, so, yeah.
Are we getting rid of a water tank?
Yeah, I think that's even sexy.
That's a different conversation.
All right, that's gonna be looked at by the infrastructure committee, so.
So Neville, you had some questions on, you're concerned about the one ninety?
Yes.
What was the other concern here? The four ninety-nine flat, although it's not expense, it's not expense, the money's coming.
The four ninety-nine flat's not on yet, but sure, the four ninety-nine beach park is, isn't like.
It's high.
Is high, is wrong. Four ninety-nine cat needs to be added.
Uh, um, I expect it. Yeah, the cat building, uh, is not on here.
Well, I'm trying to figure out why it's not, it's something we can talk about forever, trying to figure why it's not on.
Uh, is it in the fire budget?
No.
What is I, is something I already start, very explosive.
He's running out.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean. As you can see, it's a very, it's a very large empty library.
Are you even a library? I thought you were gonna be in a library, which I thought he was gonna miss it, no, I'm not, no, he's in the library.
It's good to the library. How do I get out of this place? Yeah.
So stop looking nasty at you, they lock the doors, you just stop. Speaking of four hundred.
I don't see it in the fire budget.
No, it's not, no, okay, so we.
No, that's the operating budget, yeah.
That's me, we are, we may just postpone it. The one ninety you ever concerned of, do we need to do it? Is that your question?
Yes.
And what was the other part?
Yeah, I've got nine things we need to do, the concern of the one ninety, I don't know, shouldn't be doing it. I, we need to, I don't, if it's that, if it's that issue, it's, it's a huge, huge cost. I don't know, but it's a question of risk, I don't know the answer to that.
Okay, so how do we?
I would say the infrastructure committee will be on that first.
But we need a budget for it.
Right, well, it depends, will you do something on one nine in the next seven months? Well, here's the other thing, and actually, let's bring it to close. Because there's, there's different ways to fund this, it's not like two hundred thousand is gonna shut down the door.
Okay, so why do we need to take it to close?
Uh, this is part of, you know, do we use, uh, opening reserves?
That's not, it should be out of the discussion, we can, we can talk about that.
What you can do is if you're off by two hundred thousand, we can budget for it. And like, just put it in if that's what you believe it is. It doesn't, it doesn't change our approach to the rates, it's just using more reserves than I would have liked to have used. So we can put a placeholder in there for one ninety, if that's what you're, you're on.
My, my question is, I'm not actually sure what that one ninety is.
Yeah, we don't know what it is, yeah.
Well, this is what, what do you, I gave us, that's all I have.
Okay. And so what, what if not?
That is a high priority.
Carl can go back to him and ask him, Kenny?
Well, there's some points, she's behind, there's great detail sheets behind.
No, I'm in his detailed sheets, that's what I'm, I'm looking at. This is as detailed as he gets it, let me see.
Do you have access to deny again, uh, Carl, is he gone?
Uh, no, I can, I can, you know, on a personal level, I can, I can ask him questions, that's no problem.
Okay, I mean, we wouldn't want to be doing it all the time, but if there's maybe got a half a dozen key questions in the reflection.
Well, I mean, I I agree, I, again, I I think that might just be a line swap thing. The other thing that's not on this, that had been on the, on the budget that we discussed during the finance committee. Was the continuation of the Upper Bayview water main replacement project. Uh, that project has been designed, um, it's awaiting, uh, significant funding. Um, I suppose there's no spend on it in twenty-three, so that's actually okay. The, the, the problem there is that the, uh. The major portion of the line, the water line, is asbestos cement. We, we test for asbestos, uh, we don't have to, but we do, to see when that line is starting to degrade, and at the moment, there is no asbestos in our water. So, um, that's a good indication, we've got a few, few more years there, so that's probably good news.
Not the only asbestos pipe we've left, right?
Uh, there's some, uh, in the middle part of, uh, of Ocean View.
So.
Uh, near where the Black Piper is.
So the only construction, and Carl, you brought up a interesting question about, um, road paving, because the last few years, we've been done. Between one fifty and two hundred K with the road paving every year, year trying to catch up to it, there's none on this year's budget. You don't want to pay any revenues this year?
Yeah, you have engine sixty-two, or I would suggest it's maybe engine sixty-two and or road paving. Uh, the fire department asked for nine hundred thousand for a new engine. Um, line space never bought a new engine before, uh, we have some must-do road paving before the winter. Uh, if we don't, uh, the blade will be taking off the skin and going down to the gravel. Um, but I see what Joe's done there is he's just put that, that's the number that's being taxed for, or that's the number that's being budgeted. What do we want to spend it on?
Yeah, so the number doesn't ask for, that came up in our finance meeting, um, it's kind of, uh, what could kind of. Turn the, uh, the dial here, uh, move the needle, and so, uh, was it, do you want to buy a fire truck? Um, which potentially, I mean, if you've got a source of fire truck, are we actually gonna be able to buy one within the next year? Uh, but so that was the question that's been on the fire department's request list for a while now. Um, or do we need to do road paving, because road paving wasn't in Nye's original budget? So that's the question, do you want to do, can we do both, or do you want to do one or the other? Uh, so that was up for discussion.
And I think we have any option but to keep going with the road paving program, one of the things we have to keep going.
Unfortunately, yeah.
We should talk to the province about fire engine.
Sorry, I, I missed that, can't say it again?
Oh, I, I, I talked to Belle Karen and, uh. Anwar, they, they've got some help from, from other areas, that the provincial government should be talked to about the fire engine, just because of all the calls.
But isn't the final part of nature assessment fire, they, they've got a completely different arrangement in D L C S.
Yeah. But I'm, I'm saying that, with all the calls that we get out, one of the, one of the mayors had mentioned that we should be getting some help, we should be talking to the province. So maybe reaching out to.
Yeah, I agree.
Somebody else.
Federal money.
Because almost all our calls are.
Yeah.
Helping people, yeah, on that provincial highway.
We got federal money for the last truck as well, so. So I think we leave the nine.
But we do need a road, we all, we all agree we need the road, so it's a good place, Mark, it's.
Exactly.
So we'll rename it, essentially.
Well, no, it just doesn't say that, it says fire truck or.
Doesn't.
Doesn't know.
Doesn't say, this is fire truck.
No, it doesn't, sorry.
Then it does, yes. On this one, it's changed, the aim pay or paving has been added, we look it online. Well, we don't need, I don't, I think we need to do nine hundred Ks with the paving, do we call?
No, no, the, uh, the necessary paving is seven twenty, and we can get away with three fifty. This year. Which is not insignificant, and I'll just, unfortunately, um, they are both in, in, uh, places. Where, uh, we'll have to dig them up again in three, three, four, five years' time to replace the water main.
Yeah, and I know when, when you weren't in your role now, and you weren't on council, you passed those comments as a resident, and a lot of residents see it that way. Um, but it's, it's an unfortunate reality, um, that we have to, at some point, we're gonna dig up every road. Um, and all the ones that have got the worst paving happen to the ones that are gonna be dug up sooner.
Well, there's a reason for that, yeah, I mean, the, the paving is bad because the pipes under them are leaking, the alligatoring is, is because of excess. Water under the road and the freeze-thaw cycle, yeah.
Then in the drainage, in some cases, the drainage is creating water under the road, right?
Yeah, exactly, uh, we.
Are you able to get seven, are you able to get seven hundred and twenty thousand of paving done in seven months?
Yeah, I mean, those guys, you know, they come with a crew of twenty-four, and, uh. This is the kind of project where, you know, they will mill the road down, uh, they will be sort of a little bit of cambering, a recambering, there will be scuppers. Uh, built in rather than cut in later. Yeah, you can get a, for that kind of money, you can get a pretty good, uh, road paving project.
You said you can get away with three seventy-five, but unnecessary is seven twenty. What I'm saying for the budget is seven twenty plus one ninety is roughly nine hundred, and that's what we have a place mark here for.
Uh, what, what's the other one ninety?
Well, this is what Neville is talking about.
The one that we can't work out what it is, and you think it's a miss, miss, miss tag on the line, I.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, we know we need, the one ninety's in there, you says there's another one ninety that we need.
No, no, I'm saying if that one ninety is what I think it is, um, then we need.
Need it in there.
Well, we need to have a much more serious discussion about what we're doing about it, because we can't afford the repair. And who's doing the next call says, the Modi's, the province, who else is responsible?
So it sounds like.
Well, Carl's gotta, uh, reach out to Nye, so, I'll get some questions, so we can revisit this.
Yeah, we can leave those two questions to the next Tuesday, we'll, we'll distribute them.
Good questions, yeah.
Well, I think, yeah, I think we should revisit the capital thing in general, and we'll call in the Rubens for further information.
Yeah.
I mean.
Yeah, this is, this is some revolving conversation, uh, but since the last time I saw this budget, that debris flow thing is new to me. And what has, what has gone.
It's what, sir?
New.
Okay, so what we'll do then is, what are you back?
Monday, Monday night.
Are you, are you guys available Monday afternoon?
No, it's back Monday night.
Oh, you're back Monday night?
So Tuesday.
Yeah, I'm hoping to have a meeting of the council or anything next week.
Well, I, I'm back in the saddle, so I'm available, yeah.
But you can reach out to Nye pretty much in the next, even over the weekend, right?
Uh, yes.
So, we'll find out some of these answers by, by Monday.
The call, before we log off, um, we'll get off this topic, the other thing, so the only project here that looks to me is a construction project. Is this ninety meters of pipe in Crete view. Um, and we're gonna split it between, uh, water and. Um, in, in general, and it looks like, what's it, it's ninety. Ninety plus one thirty-five, two twenty-five. Um, for ninety meters of pipe, that's like two thousand bucks a meter, I, I guess it's reasonable prices, that might be.
Yeah, this, this is just, uh, yeah, that is, uh, that number there. I believe is only the survey and design, that, that has not been done, that project has to be done. Uh, the pipe is leaking, it's also iron.
It can be two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for ninety meters of survey and design, can possibly be. Unless it's not ninety meters, it sounds like a very short piece of pipe.
It, it is only ninety meters, yeah, I mean, it's Crete view is short.
I mean, that's a design contract, I, I would love, it's a lot of money.
It's just for the design, yeah, that's true, but it, it, ninety is not enough for, for the construction.
No, no, there's two numbers, ninety and then one thirty-five, there's a split between the two funds, so it's two twenty-five in total.
Okay, I'm looking at a slight, uh, oh, there it is, sorry, I, uh, yes.
Low down, yeah.
Yeah, uh, beg your pardon, yeah, I mean, well, that's what, uh, that's what Nye, uh, estimated, I guess he got that number from ISL. Um.
It's two twenty-five installed. It's, to me, it looks like two twenty-five installed, um.
Why don't we leave the capital budget from Monday, he can talk to Nye the next day or two.
Yeah.
Spend two hours on this on capital, what you'd like to do, because it's easy to change the number.
That's what I'm suggesting.
Make a big difference.
That's what I'm suggesting of you, I just want to throw my questions out to Carl, so when he's talking to Nye, we get this in play, I'm suggesting, I agree with it. Come back to this next week and we understand it better.
But my.
Oh, sorry. So that was the one goal, okay, the roads seem answered, um, that one, which looks like installation cost, and then the other one was, um. Okay, I don't, I'm not sure, the two hundred and fifteen meters, and this is just the design cost by the looks of it. Two hundred and fifteen meters on Ocean View Road. That's the, the piece in front of the, the village-owned road in lots, that we're thinking of. Kind of developed, is that what that one is?
Yes, it's from the, without, without mentioning resident names, uh, it's from. The first main bend on Ocean View, if you're going uphill, that turns left.
Where's the, where the Black Piper is?
It's more or less where the back pipe is, down to Harvey Creek.
Yeah, so it's the village-owned, I can show you guys on the map, this is a village-owned piece of property. Okay, so the idea here is, this is a design in order to allow us to develop that, is that the thought? Because we, we already, we already have a drainage design on that, if you remember, we did that, I sell did that. Years ago, while the construction committee was still going.
This, this would, from my understanding, this is an update of that design, that was a hundred-year, uh, uh, rainfall event, uh, design. Which you'll remember, you know, that called for one meter diameter culvert, which is just crazy. Um, there's, there's, there's an additional piece in here, we don't actually have a stormwater management model, um. And that's something that I'm gonna be looking at, one of these summer students potentially populating, there, there's a free model provided by the EPA, the US EPA. Um, that's really powerful, that I would actually like to just see what, what it tells us about. Our permeability and culvert sizes, ditch sizes, uh, you know, infiltration basins, all that good stuff. Um, not mainly for stormwater, but also to a certain extent for sewer. Um, in, uh, on, on the other side there, but, uh, so. This, I believe, is not, this is not predicated on, on the village-owned land there, this is. A redo on the, on the initial, uh, design that was, you know, the, the hundred-year rainfall event design.
That would be, would be stupid to do that and not consider what the development of that land would look like, and have to come back and dig it up and do something different later.
Yeah.
Which one was that?
Ocean View.
Ocean View, yeah.
Where is that on? Water fund, on the water, under the water fund section, two hundred and fifteen meters on Ocean View, the first line item, fifty K. Water fund, on the water, under the water fund section, two hundred and fifteen meters on Ocean View, the first line item, fifty K.
Oh, yeah.
So that whole project is about eight hundred and fifty K. Does that make sense? Sixty, forty, split water and roads, revised cost eight fifty K. Size watering and road repairs on highway place, highway something, in Ocean View Road. Is that what you're talking about?
This piece is just the Ocean View Road part.
And that number.
The Highview Place part is in a separate line.
Is it total cost on that? We don't have that on here.
No, because it's, it's in the future, eight hundred and fifty thousand.
That number would need updating. That's a fairly old number, uh, but that's, that's sort of indicative uh, for, for that section of water main and, and the drainage.
Yeah, the Highview Place one here is a different line item, but lower down, fifty, fifty, so forty K inside, eighty K in total. That's just.
You know, like, just, just for sort of a philosophical uh, uh, look at this. Your lines base uh, is different to many communities where you actually want to use your ditches for infiltration. We do not because our ground is so permeable, we actually want to move the water away as fast as possible to its final disposition, which in this particular stretch is Harvey Creek. Um, so we're talking about lined ditches, um, which is why we have the black pipe there now. It's to move the water away because if we're allowed to infiltrate in the ditch, uh, it, it, as you very well know, there's, there's sections of Ocean View where the, the water in the ditch just disappears.
Yeah, well, it happens in.
So it's about eighty thousand, right? Roughly for this year.
Yeah, but once again, we need to get understanding. So I, I thought we talked about that two hundred and fifteen meters. Now Carl's talking about a project we looked at before to take it all the way down to Harvey. And I, that was a couple of million bucks or something, if I remember correctly.
Yeah.
It was that I S L study, um, which we thought, all thought was oversized because we had thirty-six inch culverts under some driveways. Can you imagine what that looks like? And you, that's, that's a tube tunnel for a trailer, right? Um.
Precisely. So I mean, the, the issue there was that's never going to work because to make the, the culvert under the driveway match up, you'd have to make the ditches that deep. And you know, then you start to lose cars and people in.
Yeah, well, we give everyone an asking grant for making, do the evil, can evil theme on as they're going to the driveway.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Carl, this is a good question for you. Why would we not be moving that water at the bend into uh, what is it, Rundle?
Uh, Neville can talk to that as well as I.
Yeah, that's a long conversation.
That's a very long conversation. Uh, we, we looked at that.
Right.
Got another question.
Let's, let's leave it, Carl.
Hey, Carl, let's get into it. Talk to Nye then, right?
You're keeping like.
I'm, I'm going to run all these uh, the, the cost and priority things and to make sure that we haven't missed something. Um, as I say, the, the one thing I don't understand is this geo-hazard mitigation, hundred and ninety thousand number. Um, because that is the number I recall, I, I've been looking through my notes in the dark. Um, that I recall from Nye as being the uh, uh, drainage cost on.
But let's not say everybody details, but would, would you mind, because you're, you're sitting on top of it, want to send Carl an email and just refresh them and say, here's what your concerns are?
It's going to, yeah.
Do, do you have everything you need?
You can be cool.
I, I do, I think. Thank you. Yeah, I mean.
Because I, I don't want to be having this general discussion on our budgets of whether water should be diverted or culverts, those sort of things. That's on budget talk, that's infrastructure talk. What we need to concentrate is of twenty twenty-three, what is needed?
Yeah, well, so that hundred and ninety that you have in there, perhaps under the wrong description, uh, it would be good from all kinds of perspectives, uh, water and drainage perspectives to keep that number in there.
Okay, but don't forget we have a nine hundred in there as well.
I, I didn't forget that.
Okay, so that's, it's all like going to bolt together because that's over a million bucks.
I, I like, I like the idea that we touch on this in the next week's meeting and sort of clean up, get some more input and. Yeah.
Okay, moving on.
All right, let's move on.
Okay, I'm going to say goodbye.
Thank you, Carl.
Yeah, okay. He's out on the street.
Also, uh.
I'm in the street.
Saying, uh, you say.
Bye now.
Valuary.
This is, this is the main square of McGill.
All right.
This is McGill, good.
This is McGill.
I recognize it.
Okay, guys.
I've been there.
So this guy, before we jumped off into public works and infrastructure, um. Sure, yeah.
And I'll take him in those.
All right.
Are you wrapped in doing?
Back to you.
Here, so um, we'll pick up on page eleven, bylaw services. Fairly similar budgets to prior years. Um, the only real change in salaries, uh, reflecting um, expected increase in the collective agreements. And ever that is signed. And um, Delta on that one, it's also in twenty twenty-two, um, where uh, only spent about um, uh, so it was about six thousand dollars for uh, bylaw extra hours in the winter. Um, and maybe the original budget was eighteen hours, so keep it at eighteen hours. Um, it's that, um, our salaries and benefits expense is expected to be um, hundred and fourteen thousand. Um, to cut it down to one eight-hour shift is basically exactly the same as uh, twenty, twenty twenty-two actual. And.
So you just do it again.
Perfect. Sure. So on salaries and benefits.
Yeah.
So twenty twenty-two actual was a hundred and three thousand.
Yeah.
Oh, one, um. Absent any uh, uh, changes in staffing levels, we're proposing uh, similar amounts of staffing of one summer student. Uh, we have one full-time and then one person that comes in on the weekends uh, in the summer. Um, in twenty twenty-two, um, there was a budget for um, eighteen hours of additional time in, in winter, um, by law officers. Um, they only ended up spending about half of that, so it came in at about um, uh, six grand instead of the budgeted amount of twelve grand. So if we have tw- an eighteen-hour budget for extra hours in the winter, um, our total salaries and benefits is going to be approximately a hundred and fourteen thousand for twenty twenty-three. If I cut down the extra hours for the winter, um, it'll be back down to about a hundred and six thousand.
It was eighteen hours in total, I think.
Yeah, eighteen hours in total. Okay, eighteen hours per week, sorry.
Per week.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Basically, I would say they would, instead of eighteen, do it eight hours a week, so like one extra shift.
Okay, so the seven percent increase we're seeing here was due to those extra outs.
Yeah.
Okay, because it reads a little odd. You see the seven percent and you see down here collective bargaining, I mean, what?
Yeah.
No, we're not increasing above seven percent.
No, no, no.
Okay.
Are there any questions? I am by law.
Yeah, your note two, it says your fees for collection agency increased due to increase in tickets. Um, that's a, it's a really small increase.
Mm-hmm, that, so, but number two, so material supplies and equipment, uh, the budget includes the purchase of.
I say, I'm back on the, I saw the bylaw.
Yeah, by loss, yeah.
Says fees for collection agency increased due to increasing tickets sent to and collected by collection.
Oh, right, yeah.
But it, but it wasn't actually an increase, so it's probably an old note or something, yes. Or the numbers changed and you didn't revise the note.
You were looking at the old note, the one with the T-shirts, right?
Yeah. And yeah, it's pretty, pretty tiny.
And in that case, that was a, a different number, right? The, your old note there, note two, uh, uniforms, automated ticket software, that was the uh.
It's made one.
Yeah, well, in the original, it was note two, yeah. That's where we're budgeting nineteen oh five oh.
Yeah, correct.
Yeah.
Were there any other questions on?
Let's, 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 let's just a little bit note two. How many, wasn't, how many tickets are actually going to collection? See, you have any idea that that's a party committee discussion?
I often thought, I don't have any personal thoughts, I had.
So that will be part of. What?
I think it'll be the number short.
Yeah, well, did that, because any fifty percent of the revenue, right? That was the split, the fifty, fifty, forty, sixty split, of course.
So we take sixteen?
So we took the sixty-two hundred divided by forty percent. That tells us how much has gone functions.
So it's ten thousand.
Yeah, I'm not following you.
Well, if all of the sixty-two hundred is functionally, it's.
There's a fees, yeah.
Well, no, because it depends on how we account for it, because if you have a revenue, say two hundred dollars for the ticket.
Mm-hmm.
And we give away forty percent.
Okay, so it's not actually, okay, so it's that, the percentage of.
Yeah, they got a percentage, forty, fifty.
Okay. So there's not a lot going to collections then.
Yeah, so this is when it goes to collections, they take forty?
Yes.
Is that an industry standard?
Yeah, fifty, fifty, forty, sixty, it's always the same.
That's why they work so hard.
They can do well. That's why they don't give in either.
Yeah.
Was that roughly sixty when last year?
Sixty? Sixty bucks.
Um, so the next uh, one we'd look for, I'm looking for is a general fund council. Your next page.
Page what now? Four. Oh, twenty-four.
Uh, from the last version, the significant changes, um, after a discussion with the finance committee, we knocked down the cost of the by-election budget. Um, to uh, fifteen thousand, I think before it's like forty thousand or something.
So that's the one that was originally forty-seven.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
There's something else in there too, but at the end of the day, this, this is what is for the by-election.
But this, but this is the value that we're going to pay the consultants. But we also have a staffing cost.
We don't.
Yeah, very good. Okay, um, I think last, last time they did the.
The where?
I think that everything.
The where were they allocated to? If it's, if it's fifteen thousand last year too. The budget fifty and they came.
We staffed a lot more of those, didn't we?
Last year was, was all staffed.
Yeah.
Well, that's the thing, last year was all staffed. That fifty thousand was actually the staff.
No, they probably.
Well, what was it then?
Uh, it was the, I don't know, but they said that, but, but.
With a thousand for it, with a thousand for Dennis Back, right?
For which?
For Dennis Back, he moderated. That was a thousand as our call.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then there was staffing during the elections.
Just.
Different things.
Material was printed, taken off.
Oh, you don't think it was on?
Printing. All that stuff.
Computer.
Oh, yeah, if it was.
If she's running through the.
There's, there's, there's probably a little bit, there's probably another five.
There's no alloc, if it's allocation, you'd see transfer in or transfer out. You don't, you wouldn't see an election account. It'd have to be a journal to transfer.
So to Neville's point the other night, which was, we've already spent, what, seventy-three hundred, right? Um, yeah, how are we going to come in at fifteen? And I just want to remind everybody, we had a proposal in our packages from a, from a contractor. And that was, I think, coming in at thirty, thirty-five.
So thirty, thirty-five.
So how the heck would we come out at fifteen? I just don't see it.
It's all confirmed with um, some monthly fee by Mark Brown and the, the other two ladies' charges by the month and that's exactly what it is. And so when I sat down with them, it came to fifteen thousand.
So they charge by the month, not by the use?
You know, by the use, but they charge us monthly.
Okay.
We get invoices for travel time and their time.
Yeah, they bill monthly, but, but I mean, how, why would they be coming in at half price to the previous proposal?
I wasn't involved near the thirty to thirty-five. Somebody probably said I'll do for thirty to thirty-five, so we budgeted on that. We swing that sort of list.
Good.
Yeah, there was a consultant, the, this one was, actually, the ministry recommended the other consultant to, just two different prices.
Uh, this one was almost, it probably wasn't a set price. They've been billing us as they go on, which was the, what we're currently paying.
Dinner.
Yeah, because the other was going to be a contract price for thirty plus expensive. He has no idea how many people would be running the election and, and the head that set up the election.
Sure, but I, I just don't see how it can come out at half price. I mean, because we had two, I think we had two proposals. And I just don't see how it can come out at half price. I mean, I think that's, that's low.
I'll tell them to double it.
Yeah. All right.
Uh, were there any further questions on council?
Yeah, um.
Three thousand months by Mark Brown. Three months. And the other two are, that's up to six.
How did you?
That's what it is.
How did you calculation the increase in council salaries?
Um, I was actually just looking at that, so this is basically the, uh, it's the same amount as last year, a bit of inflation.
Are you suggesting raises?
I am, yeah, everybody gets more, no.
We're not good, about to tell you something. We do all get a raise.
Yeah.
Now, we do all get a raise and it's based on C P I.
Yeah.
It's written in a Bible and we can't change it unless you want to send the Bible. I didn't want a raise last year, we all get one. And I've been looking at C P I, it's running at six point nine percent if I'm reading the table right.
So I can revisit that.
Okay, six point nine today.
Six point nine year over year to for January. Okay, but, but, yeah, as, as I said, I'm, my account guy just did a quick Google search and it came up at six point nine for year and year for twenty twenty-two.
Throughout the year, but the rate today, would you say four?
Sure, but, but our bylaw reads that we get an increase every January that equates to C P I. B C, cost price index. And if you look to the cost price index for twenty twenty-two, it was six point nine percent. I don't think we deserve it.
Well, it is what it is. I mean, that's what it is.
No, but we're not carrying it, is what I'm saying.
Pick up your betro.
Yeah, no problem.
See, but, you see in the, you see in the regents, you know, procedures Bible, just the reading exactly. Against this.
I will revisit that and then uh, I make a difference with bylaw.
Okay, can I just ask you, but note four, that was in the original one, um, cost to cover the twenty-two municipal election to be partially offset by a draw from the election surplus of eleven five. Twenty twenty-three includes labor and other costs of the by-election. So what was that surplus?
Oh, that was just a, a note from last year's budget. Um, I, I just carried that for twenty twenty-three. It's just the, the set mission costs for the current, uh, I think, year's by-election.
Sure, so the, the previous year's by-election cost thirteen, two, eight, six and was budgeted at fifteen, so where would surplus of eleven five have come from?
Um, I can ask Haley.
Probably, I mean, that, I mean, so.
What is the hour of the uh?
Now, the point, where's the surplus from? Do we have one or not?
Um, there's, I, I can, I feel a little bit more digging to see.
Which one is that, right? Where the surplus from is.
Well, I mean, I see a surplus of, of, of what, two thousand dollars? So I'm just wondering where the surplus of eleven five came from.
It was a, a no comment uh, from Haley last year.
A no comment?
No, no comment.
So, are you looking for this?
It's on original note four. That's from the uh, original.
Yeah, it's, it's right just on the, it's not what the new one is.
What's that?
They obviously budgeted more than it was. They say they budgeted or thirty thousand, they came in at twenty.
No, we budgeted fifteen.
Came in at thirteen, three.
That's only two thousand dollars.
And then the super focus is.
So that's why I'm, where's this, where's this so-called surplus of eleven and a half thousand coming from?
Like a thing to backtrack to last year's budget to see where, where that came from.
Most of them is not in there, um. I, uh, so I've got one other, well, two other questions.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I mean, we carried, do we just carry budget from last year for events, council-funded events? Um, I don't think we've planned any council-funded events this year. Um, I don't know that we're going to spend thirteen and a half. I don't really feel we need to put a big number in there so someone feels the need to have a party. So maybe we should look at the buildup of that and kind of down to.
The buildup is, if there is a buildup, hang on. I think it's just a carryover from last year.
The, the note for last year was that um, for twenty twenty-two, the budget included uh, costs for memorial care and plaques and upgrades.
Well, we've done those, we're not doing those again.
Okay, so we can uh, knock it down there. So if uh, you don't expect, is, is there anything in particular that you expect to do?
Last year, we also had a volunteer appreciation event. I don't know if we're going to do that this year because it's moved by. Um, for the, the weeks moved by, we might still, I guess, leave something, we might still do it. We should probably still do that.
Something like that.
Um, we, we just do that as soon as a week, but it's not going to, we don't want to spend thirteen grand.
Maybe you don't need thirteen grand. I think we should have, have the capacity to fund some events so to, you know, once we have a, a full council and sort of looking at council-based events on over uh, uh, mayor's evenings or something like that.
Sure. Where do we have all our consultant fees?
Administration.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's in the, in the, okay, so when you talk with Doug and Diana.
That's administration.
So it's our administration.
Put it back to this, I mean.
Will we knock it down?
We spent ten, a couple of grand is probably what it has been spent. It's spent, so we incurred actual costs in twenty twenty-one of uh, ten thousand dollars, twenty-two, twenty-two actual was seven thousand dollars, knock it down to.
Yeah, so twenty-two was, was high because. Twenty-one.
Twenty-one was ten, right?
Yeah, twenty-one was high because that was a. That was the biggest chunk of that.
Five, thirty-five, under five.
Five is all you will ever need.
Five, five.
Okay.
So there's something there, so that's good.
Okay.
Um, and then. So. Council communications. And park medications, and I'm not sure where is what, it's about, I'll bring it up here in case it's somewhere else. We, last year we spent forty-five hundred dollars on a consultant. And maybe it should be, maybe it's in the Bible, I don't know, we spent twenty-five hundred dollars on a consultant called Meg Two, who does um, bear awareness events for us. She does, does things in the school, she came to Canada Day, um, this year we've invited to the bird friendly day. She has a very reasonable rate, you know, all the hours for that, um, you'd be shocked how much. Um, and I just wanna know where that budget is, it was there last year, but I'm not sure where it is now. It's not being a private store.
I mean, it might be in parks, but I'm happy to look into that, uh, do you remember, we call it her name?
My name is Megan Two.
Right?
Megan Two.
Yeah.
And the company name is, I'll give you the company name anyway. Second, just look at that. Email address. Um, if you can't find the company name, just send me a message.
Yeah, I'm sure I'll be able to find it. Take a look and let you know where it's, I'm guessing it's probably in parks.
The, the billing for that, I think, was in quarter, quarter, fourth. That's on that, this twenty twenty-four, about June fourth quarter.
Okay.
Is it Serratus Wildlife?
That's it, yeah.
Yeah, Serratus Wildlife, S E double R A T U S.
You just Google it.
Yeah.
Google's your friend.
All right, great, yeah, I'll take, look at that. Okay. Um, if there are no more questions on council, um, we'd, we'd move into the next page, which is um, in general funding and emergency management. Um, very least, uh, similar to last year, we are online, uh, third line down, emergency support services, E S S, expecting a increase to ten thousand. The um, the prior year increase uh, from thirteen thousand, um, but the prior budget was twenty-five thousand dollars, um, they only incurred uh, thirteen thousand. Uh, so the prior year budget included twenty-one thousand dollars for supplies and equipment, only half was spent. Uh, so the current year is basically the rest of that and then a little bit for um, whatever else might happen. So effectively, it's uh, ten thousand for supplies and equipment and then uh, a base of about four to five thousand.
Okay, so then, that leftover money had to be spent by, whatever it was, was it February or March, isn't it?
End of March, I think.
End of March, I think they've spent it, maybe I should know that, maybe a fool become see about. But he also told us in that same meeting that he was planning on applying for another grant for this year, and he had some things in mind. So I think we need to circle back to him and see what that was. Let's run, do you remember from the notes in the E P C meeting? Or what was that for? The E P C meeting, they had just left their money from the, but grant from last year, which Joseph pointed out, which we had to spend in March. And I think they've done that, otherwise the grant is gone, and then Phil told us he was gonna bring another grant this year. Um, and I think he gave us a number in that meeting. If not, if not, just reach out to Phil from Red Cape, he probably wants to talk to you anyway, because um, the next, next point we've got here. No, Phil.
Phil focus.
Phil focuses. Um, and we agreed that this year we would, you would want thirty thousand, not forty thousand. The professional fees and contracts, there's, this is line on your note four.
Hmm, right, yeah.
He wants, he wanted thirty thousand this year. And the last time I spoke to him, that hadn't happened. He's looking for that. Um, and then he'll tell you what we should be budgeting for the grants. Or for what you should budget for expenses, you're based on what he's applying for the grant.
So he, he, his contract only wants, he wants thirty thousand, okay.
Yeah, we didn't spend everything last year, he's now spent. So I brought to council, we had a given that he can spend last year's budget this year to keep going, and I think he spent that. Um, he needs another thirty thousand.
I understand that the contract was. But we were invoiced twenty-five thousand last year and then uh, and the contractor amount was thirty-five K, so now he wants only thirty?
Yeah, so he's got ten left from last year, then he's now spent in the first part of this year. So you won't need a full year, right?
Yeah.
Isn't that his wage?
He doesn't have a wage, he builds on an hourly rate. He builds us like less than thirty, he's actually going, going rate, because he's a resident, he builds us fifty bucks an hour. Um, and it's, it's a good deal. He works, probably works, he works a lot more hours than he builds. And I guess, if you ever look at his records, it's a good deal. And he's, and I think he charges a hundred and fifty, a hundred and sixty typically.
What does he do?
Is that, is that safety and emergency planning guy?
I remember from meetings, he does that full-time.
Yep, yeah, he does now, he used to, he used to be a safety on the construction industry, he's moved into this. But he does a lot of work for, I didn't need his penalties, he doesn't see, the accusations. Um. The other one I've got here is.
So the thirty thousand is the rest, it's actually forty thousand, is it forty thousand a year and here he had ten?
No, then we're dropping it to, no, we're dropping it to thirty thousand a year, I think that's the intention.
For the, for the year.
Yes.
Yeah.
But he already had a ten.
To carry over.
Carry over next year, yeah.
He must have been charging thirty-five and spent twenty-five. And left over.
To the left over, yeah. But he's not gonna need to thirty every year, because one of the things he has to get done is the evacuation plan, that's the big deal. And then we, in future years, we'll probably only budgeting much less for it, once he gets it all set up and going. I would expect that numbers dropped out to twenty, something like that. Um. We have lost my other spot here in a second, oh. Um, item number one. So we're budgeting the same as last year, but we're not buying laptops again. We bought the laptops last year. This year we're not doing that, so we shouldn't, I don't know what we're planning for communications this year, but we're not buying, repurchasing the laptops, that's done, so that should be. Really small amount, if anything.
Yeah, knock it down to.
We'll go see what we actually did spend last year on laptops versus I T support, and knock it down to something appropriate, but it's, it'll be a fraction of the, of that man.
Okay.
Um.
Now, emergency management probably was more volunteer-based. Uh, in the past and maybe would be, would require some costs now.
Well, no.
With uh, yeah, not, he's against on that board, right?
No, we're still volunteer-based. Um, but, um, if you're referring to Phil, we had a, a staff member that did it for a few years on staff.
No, no, I'm talking about the I T communications.
I T communication staff?
Yeah.
Um, that was for purchasing laptops and things for the E O C committee.
Right. Okay, but you said there's, there was also some operating costs in there.
Well, I'm just, I'm just reading the note.
Okay.
This note says increased I C port for four laptops. And then the purchase of the laptops, we bought the, yeah, we bought the laptops, and now we just need the I C port, or is it next to nothing or nothing, or what is it?
Yeah, so leaving a much smaller number, I can take a look at that, see what the split is.
Yeah, um, and then this note about COVID supplies. Um, haven't we spent all the COVID money? That's an old note, isn't it?
Uh, yeah, it was carried from last year, it says, the, the note was that it should be spent in twenty, or the remainder needs to be spent in twenty twenty-three?
But what is that number we need to spend, because it's not on the grant list? I thought we'd done, spent all the COVID money.
To be funded by the COVID grant, and it's not in.
To previously things like this were funded by the COVID grant, because that's what prices always, people coming here and the Washington issues, a little bit of rates of. Accounting, we had to find ways to spend that money, and the promise is very loose of what you call, no one, no one orders you to be, so as long as it's a reasonable assumption. So we use this because, you know, we have influx of people coming to our beach during COVID. That's over, and I think we managed to spend all the COVID money as of last year. If there isn't, and there's laws left over, we better spend it this year on something like that, otherwise you're gonna have to send it back. You know, check that COVID grant fund, see if there's anything left. Although I'm, I'm relatively sure it was last year, we, we done, but I'm gonna check, there's anything they have to spend it.
A Washington thing was done by students last year.
Yeah, same, same plan this year.
Yeah, same thing this year, yeah. Are there any other questions on E O C uh, emergency management, or can you move on to the next? Next would be the fire department.
The experience.
Thank you. Um, is there anything in, so for professional fees and contract services, um, that's the, uh. U B C M, um, uh, Community Wildfire Production Project that was completed last year, uh, discussed with Barrett, it's not gonna happen this year, so that's why it does it zero.
Okay, so that's one of the grant ones you've got to stretch off from now, as you were carrying it, okay.
Um, the materials and supplies, uh, projected to increase about twelve thousand dollars. Um, and that's for um, uh. The engine deckling, um, and inflationary costs for purchasing metal equipment, such as an air resection equipment and splint. The embolization and traction equipment for the uh, fire department. Uh, everything else is fairly straight on, uh. Salaries and benefits are up about uh, uh, four percent, uh, it's just uh, uh, inflationary costs built in there, nothing specific. Were there any questions or anything that you'd like me to follow up on specifically?
For the fire department, they have a outstanding, I need a score for something for that, some point.
I can uh, check where that number comes from, it's uh, it's hardcore industry number, yes.
Trust me, yeah. Go on. Have the capacity to.
Yeah.
So insurance, that's the industry standard here, jumped up by over twenty percent?
Insurance is going up everywhere, yes.
Yeah.
Wherever you see an insurance line item in any of the departments is up.
Yeah.
Twenty-one percent.
But I can't see if we have a, the quote for this year, see if the numbers tie up.
So the salaries and benefits, I mean, so it's. One twenty-three to one sixty-one, essentially, right?
Mm-hmm.
What accounts for that?
Um, well, there's a, Barrett's fees are now in salary and benefits, they used to be in professional fee contract services.
Okay.
So you used to be contracted position.
Right.
Now it's a salary position.
Okay, so that's adding the bulk of that?
Yeah.
Okay. So of that forty, or thirty-eight?
Barrett is thirty-five.
Okay. All right.
The big difference between the budgets and the actuals was like the one fifty-five and twenty-two down to the one twenty-three.
Yeah.
But that's because they continually end up being understaffed. And they're running short handed.
Right.
We've got an ideal number of twenty-five and then seldom get over twenty, it doesn't quite mean that it's twenty, twenty, twenty-five, whatever, it's around those numbers. So, so they, year on year, they always don't manage to quite get a fully staffed file all year round.
So shouldn't we be budgeting one fifty-five plus the thirty then?
I don't know, I think the hard view is give them the target and try get them to be fully staffed, we, we don't need them to be shorthanded, so let's not.
Sure.
Restrict them if they can actually staff up, but you would expect, you will expect to see next year they're short again.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, but I wouldn't suggest we restrict them, because we'd like them to be fully staffed, right?
Yeah, but aren't we restricting them with a one sixty-one then?
Yes, because.
Still growth.
Yeah.
Because I include. They can't find any higher, except that, so he said that it's tough all the way around town, the shortage.
Yeah, so you, uh, sorry, you used the actual and then you added there, so maybe you should be bumping that.
Yeah, so wouldn't we be one eighty-five?
Yeah, one eighty-five?
Yeah.
You'd expect that.
Yeah, I, I, I wouldn't put a limit on them if they managed to get a full complement, we should be able to do it.
How do you turn eighty-five? I see the actual was one fifty.
No, um, the point by two actual is one hundred and twenty-three.
Your actual was one fifty, when you compare the two.
Twenty, twenty-two actual on salaries and benefits.
You gotta have the twenty-seven, seven.
Oh, yeah, well, these two.
Yeah, okay, if you had the twenty-seven, sure, actually, yeah.
Okay.
So we're bumping that one up or not?
No, we don't need to.
One fifty and we're gonna find to one sixty-one.
All right.
So where's the one fifty coming from?
From, you're looking for contract services. So, um.
There was previously Andrew.
Yeah, so he was.
Andrew's twenty-seven, he had Andrew's twenty-seven, seven on to the one twenty-three.
Okay, got you.
So, yeah, maybe.
Ten thousand. Because I know, um, Barrett did say he just, he just can't get people.
Now, is that housing as well?
Nobody wants to live in Lansbury.
Well.
It's a shortage.
They're looking for suits.
No, it's not, it's, well, shortages in labor.
Yeah, labor shortage.
Yeah, the shortage everywhere.
Barrett tells a story when he was applying at the beginning of his career, it was like one or two hirees of thousands.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
You never say, you were the pulse.
Now, yeah.
Well, it's because they can't, can't live in the city or in commerce, and they don't wanna come over here anymore.
But, but there is shortages in all.
But, so they're not gonna come over here if they get a job there.
No, exactly. And the other example is.
Get trained to get the jobs.
The other example is West Ham, um, almost none of their crews live in West Ham, they're almost all come from the valley. Yeah, they can't afford to live in West Ham.
Hence the beautiful commute as of one P M across the bridges.
Yeah. Um, are there any other questions on fire?
Yeah.
Um, we need to. Obstacle questions for another time on this whole fire thing, how destruction, what we should be doing to that earlier conversation, but that's not for this.
Uh, next uh, page would be a general fund planning and development. Remember.
Fifteen, fifteen point four.
So pretty even with the prior year, so the, um. Big, uh, so when you look at the uh, differences between um, last year's actual and um, last year's budget, so last year's actual was forty-four thousand dollars in total. And then last year's budget was ninety-seven thousand dollars, uh, primarily, um, the difference is where there is decreased costs incurred for professional fees and salaries and benefits. Um, the last year's budget of forty-seven thousand dollars for professional fees and contract services included uh, twenty-five thousand dollars for um. And planning consultants, and then um, land surveys, land appraisals, and some miscellaneous. Um, the land surveys and land appraisers miscellaneous, um, like five thousand budget, uh. Uh, four, uh, four thousand actual, five thousand budget, fifty-two hundred actual, it's all pretty close. What didn't end up happening last year for actuals was that the uh, communication consultant, um, for the strategic plan, uh, we budgeted seventy-five hundred dollars. And then that even goes back to twenty twenty-one, um, the cost was not incurred, um, and so it's rebudgeted um, into twenty twenty-three. And the same thing with twenty-five thousand for the planning consultant, which was um, originally budgeted in twenty twenty-one. And it's been moved forward to twenty twenty-two budget, and then that was being rebudgeted to twenty twenty-three.
So, what's the sort of philosophical accounting process that we do, so we ought to carry these rebudgets over, assuming that we're gonna do them at some point? Yeah? But if at some point we decide, you know, if you're ever gonna do that. Um, then we should kill it, right?
Yeah.
I much know this is the best example, but there's several examples of this, but yeah, this is rebudget, 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 we never intend to do it.
Yeah.
So, I mean, shouldn't we at some point just say, nah, put it back into reserves?
Yeah.
It doesn't cost the taxpayers any, because it's a rebudget.
Yeah, it doesn't.
Carry it to somewhere else and putting it back in.
Yeah.
But there's a part you stop doing it, you're afraid there.
Yeah, like, is it, because it may be a little bit better optics as well, because when you look at, there's, there's a lot like the rebudgeting and then transfers between the reserves may not be um, easily digestible by uh, you know, residents just re, reviewing the financial statements. And we have trouble sometimes figuring out where this stuff's getting rebudgeted from. So if, if you, if there's really no intent to carry on with the project that was originally budgeted, budgeted in twenty twenty-one. If you take it out, well then, yeah, the budget's gonna go down, um, and uh, there's, it's actually no effect um, on our net um, surplus or deficit, because. This amount is being offset by a rebudget in our transfer from reserve, so we already taxed for it like in twenty twenty-one.
Yeah. But we, but we showed this budget.
Yeah, 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 you could, yes.
We're talking about the seventy-five hundred.
And twenty-five thousand.
Twenty-five thousand.
Right. Yeah.
It's been there for two years now?
Yep.
So I can take that out if you, like.
And it's same with, um, instead of the seventy-five hundred is, um, previous council, started in the rain, um, calls before that. Like to use consultants to do strategic planning sessions for us. I think that's where we're going, we've got, currently we've got Randy planning offering to do that, some of that for us, um. Are we gonna employ these consultants? Do we still think it's good spending money? I, I've always thought we could do it in-house. Um. We don't really need a planning consultant, seventy-five hundred bucks for what we do. We don't really need a planning consultant, seventy five hundred bucks for what we do.
And no, you're dead on.
Yeah.
So your maintenance place and you don't.
And and exactly, and the point and to my point is, in fact, the case rebudgeting means even the group that wanted to do it never ended up doing it, so. So I keep doing it. I'll drop the note.
That's including the forty seven six.
Yeah, that's all included in the forty seven, yes. Yeah.
There's no other thing.
Yes, no problem.
So we're killing like the twenty five and the seventy five hundred?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, that makes sense to me. Move on, Joe.
Yes.
Probably we did.
But work we did. And the next one would be parks and recreation. Parks and recreation.
Yeah, and a sequence on the other copy if you're looking for a office.
Yeah.
This is actually the one before, it was the one before.
So page seventeen?
Yeah. Page twelve, page nine, electronic copy, okay.
So we have maintenance coming down, uh expected most to be more closer to the twenty twenty two actual. Twenty twenty two actual is sixty thousand, got it near at sixty three thousand. Uh. The uh material supplies and equipment is um adjusted to go down by twenty one or almost twenty two thousand dollars.
What what did we keep in that line? Because the the extra bit of bins were expensive, like thirty five hundred popcorn. But we've done that. That was a big, big number there. Now, what's what's left in the thirty four there?
That's it sound.
Um, I think. Actually, the material.
Materials. There was that.
They're going to they're going to be hauling logs and they're going to be.
But that's a good question. So is the beach, is the beach stuff, you reach cleanup and set up in here? I think that's the number.
The decrease um from my notes is that um we purchased bear proof garbage cans in twenty twenty two, so we're not budgeting for those again in current year. And then um our our budget does include fifteen thousand uh for the seed to sky invasive species twenty twenty three work plan. Um, it uh.
Fifteen K, and that's been saying year on year?
Yeah, that's what they propose in their contract, yeah.
For which?
Invasive species communications.
That's that's in professional fees and contract services. Yeah, that's done. Yeah. My printout class. Yeah.
If you give another nineteen now.
Yes, it's um.
Yes, we're going to have some expenses in terms of of wall. Wall reinforcement and.
Well, that's that's going to be a difficult budget. It's going to be, yeah, that's going to be careful.
Well, some of that, some of that. Done early.
So the um the decrease in um the maintenance cost. I discussed this with nine last year included a fifteen thousand for the Pride Trail uh bridge replacement and also accounts amounts for Lager's Lane culvert repair. Irrigation irrigation for Hellman Grove. Firm and electric lawnmower, which were all completed. So we're not budgeting for those costs in the current year. The current year budget um is pretty much twenty two's actual plus a bit of inflation at sixty three thousand. Uh, and uh so that came from discussions with nine that this is probably what we're going to look at for maintenance. For the uh material supplies and equipment, that decrease is due to the um the purchase of the bear proof um uh garbage cans in twenty twenty two, so we're not rebudgeting for that.
So you you had mentioned, I think, um, that wall down on that beach, that that's not going to be part of your beach project.
No.
Funding, but it is going to need to be, it's undermining itself there, so there there needs to be some work done there. There's it's.
Yeah.
They probably will put some rocks, concrete.
Wouldn't suggest. What I heard him saying, when we're talking about the uh the jetty, was was to dig down and put put rocks in front of the existing wall. To stabilize the wall.
Mm hmm.
It's a good sized rocks in there.
On the jetty, you too.
No, on both, in front of the, yeah, and the jetty, but also in front of the actual cement wall, talk for us.
But that that is amazing, so maybe maybe there should be something put in.
Yeah. And uh I don't know, you know. The the number of logs that came in as a result of that.
The early is you do that, it'll probably have to be done in the fall, but the early you do it. Um, if it goes another season and it does undermine it, it'll fall and then there'll be big expense.
Destroying the wall and the most bank. So things and stuff there, and I and I think, you know.
That that'll be done in like November.
Yeah.
Time, that's when they do that.
Why don't we add to calls listed, you're going to.
Yeah. Carl will, yeah, add it to Carl's list. It's like somebody like a Scott Christie that, yeah, can.
So so now 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 he told us he was, when he was in Westland, he did this exact same repair on one of the similar, one of the beaches a few years ago.
Yeah.
He had some idea what it took. Um, and he and he described, you know, exactly what we needed to do, and I had a good idea. That's why I said call and might call, and I might have put one of these programs or not, I don't know. Um. Scott Christie, you know, obviously, but he but he was thinking, he's thinking a lot bigger a week before. He's always out there putting booze out there and extending the jetty on them.
The wall's different though.
No, no, but he's to protect the wall to stop from erosion.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, he had he had a big picture.
The beach.
Big way to the beach.
But there were some more easier stuff that he was talking about that involved.
Normally, the way that you pass that, so that doesn't usually come directly and very rarely.
That was that was fairly extraordinary, but we do have a lot of, I don't know how much family it was every year. Obviously, it wasn't there in the first place.
Yeah.
He's been washed out, so so.
New jetty will help keep the sand.
That will really help, yeah. But I but I think, you know, we should also be able to be uh. Responsible if if the if the marina's bringing machines in to try to reinforce where they are, if we can, you know, if. If if when they're trucking rocks, this is what Scott Christie was saying, when they're trucking rocks in for the marina, which likely they will. If we can take you back on that, so if we if we have some funds there in order to be uh. You know, to that we we've we've funded it.
Probably one either twenty five D's would stick out of that wall.
Yeah.
Because you can actually rocket it, is that one at the barge and.
And then we can, and and then, you know, we can maybe work together with somebody that we're that we're doing on the jetty as well, when we got a machine in. So or it's repair on that wall, so it's repair maintenance.
Hey, Joe, question for you. Uh, uh, just back to the invasive species fifteen thousand. You said that's a carry for that's 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 done in previous years as well?
Uh, I believe that then this uh they were engaged in prior years as well, but this is based on the current year's contract uh with uh this uh this firm.
Okay, so their their fee must have jumped significantly because the actual for the whole thing was. Was eleven, right?
Yeah.
And that includes other items, I presume?
Yeah.
So just these forces is fifteen five?
Yes, yeah.
So what's, how much has their contract jumped by? Must be significant.
Um, it was certainly larger than last year, uh, but that is with that included as far as their their contract, I got this from uh from nine as well.
Hmm, because I mean, the total for twenty two was eleven. Which presumably included other items as well.
I will uh see if that was um how much it cost last year. Um, I think that eleven thousand. Okay.
We can have a twenty in for the wall.
Um, and you put that in which line again?
It's its own line.
Mine.
Mine. So maybe you track some funds for global warming. Issues.
And what would you like?
Our mental issues.
Uh, what would you like to call it?
Uh. Each stabilization.
Each.
Why don't you just put it, if you just put it into main, you just put a note that you have had in the notes rather.
Okay, no, I still get it. I know, those are for our purposes.
Yeah. Just seems out of place to in particular.
Each wall stabilization.
It's the rest of them, that's.
Okay, yeah, no problem. There are no further questions for parks and rec. Uh, our next one is water.
Oh, that's all those.
Um.
Different water.
No, water, everything in water, uh sewer and solid waste has been discussed before. There's no changes. There's the only thing is that it's all everything's at five percent increase for rates. Nope, no change in that. Um, I did do. Do I have that in here?
Okay.
I did do a little bit of digging. Westland, Westland proposed an increase of five percent in water rates and Northland increased uh by seven, it sounds.
The front line.
We done the same thing. He does.
So let's go on to the clothes. I just, there was just one thing that um. And yeah, it's the wear. So solid waste. Let's ask. So it's so bad. Uh, so these numbers have changed. And the sewer's got a surface of ninety eight. Now, this sheet. And the base sheet's a hundred and sixty.
Difference. Which community?
Oh, yeah, so do for problem on the online, okay, and it's like on this page, page eighteen. Drafts, surbages, we've got a surplus of ninety eight.
Mm hmm.
But why would I not see the same number not on this sheet? Where you've got a surplus of twenty thousand four hundred and seventy one.
Oh, um, that's on a cash flow, so and. That's on my breakdown here. Some numbers are kind of moving in. So our surplus there is a sixty one add back amortization on cash item. You get up to ninety one thousand. And then there's um a capex finished for scatter. Uh, and then the partial taxes, um, reallocation to the parcel taxers are put in that cash.
Okay, so we're not stealing.
Yeah, that's.
There's no, so in the same, okay, so the other ones were all whistle line for me as well. They're all the same. Okay, that's the accounting, just walking back and forth.
Yeah, okay.
Um, we should probably get those notes, right? And just so like when we're working through it, so we can see that and like, yeah, happy to find more or less.
So what if we realize some of us digging, so a few notes means we don't dig for long.
Yeah.
Okay.
Fair enough.
Okay, guys, you've been an expert.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We pretty much done for tonight. That's, we'll move into the Q and A. Uh, we'll go back to the public.
Okay, to receive the, to receive the. Budget, revised budget material.
So move.
Second. All favor.
Yes.
Both carried. Thank you. Okay, we'll move to uh Q and A if there's any questions from the gallery. No hands? Okay, no hands. Um, uh, well. Motion to adjourn the open portion, we'll move into the close, so actually. Uh, perhaps I should read out the close to before we.
Yeah, so we so we're looking at the the staffing thing, so we do have the correct. Or suppose in this map. We'll be looking at.
Yeah, we do. I just checked that out. We so proposed topics for discussion. Uh, next item is close the committee of the whole meeting and it's uh A personnel. Uh, from section ninety point one, uh nineteen point one A and nineteen point one N. And the committee does not anticipate that we'll reconvene the meeting. Uh, for the purposes other than to report out, there is something to report out, and with that, uh. Motion to adjourn the open portion of the meeting.
So move.
Second.
Oh, second.
All favor.
Yes.
Both carried. Okay, if you'll just uh. Allow everyone to step offline. Moving.